Hello, everybody. So, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our work session for today. The first item on our agenda is an ordinance for RECM Investments LLC zoning map amendment at 347 and 353 and 359 North 700 West. And at the table, we have Nick Tarbet, Casey Stewart, and Wayne Mills.
Okay, yeah, so this is a rezone request at these parcels from SR1 to RMF 35. I'll let Casey give the overview, but we do have the applicant Christian McMullen is here and would like to talk with the council after Casey's briefing.
Great, thank you.
All right, so I have just a few slides to show you. The request again is to change the zoning of a particular property, actually three properties that are adjacent to each other. They're currently zoned SR1, and the applicant is requesting they change that to RMF, or residential multifamily 35, 35 indicating the building height.
Technical difficulties, just a minute.
Here are some images of the site. An aerial photograph on the left with the site outlined. You can see the three parcels outlined in yellow. On the right is the current zoning map. You can see they are highlighted with an SR1 zoning designation, which SR1 stands for Special Development Pattern Residential. And then the smaller image down below just kind of gives you more of a context of the different zoning districts around that block. There is some RMF 35 zoning already within that block, it's that darker brown color, and so this site is just adjacent to that. And previously, this, these three parcels were zoned RMF 35 from 1995 to 1999. And then in 99, the city council changed the zoning to SR1 in anticipation of a development that did not occur. And some new owners have acquired the property and would like to, are requesting this zone change for a project that they anticipate building here. Here's just another aerial view of the site. You can see I-15 directly in front of the site. So, the I-15 freeway there is supported by a fairly tall wall, it's probably 30 feet tall or so, adjacent to that site. And here, looking directly at the sites.
Sorry, I had a question, or you said something, I think, and I was asking another question. Did you explain why this was changed in 99 from RMF to SR1?
In the memo, I did, but I have not verbally, I can do that.
Yeah.
So, based on the record, the city council, there was some concern about the stability of this neighborhood back then. It's predominantly a single-family neighborhood, kind of the larger area. And there was some concern about destabilizing that with multifamily zoning. So they changed this one, these three parcels to SR1 in an attempt to do that, but since those were changed, the site has sat undeveloped, and the housing pressures now currently are different than they were back then.
Gotcha.
So it seems like a fairly logical site to increase the density in a moderate fashion as is proposed. So, planning staff is in support of it, the planning commission recommended in favor of it, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
And there is one last slide, just, this is the project currently being considered. It's in for review by the planning commission. It would be 24 units in four different buildings with a center drive access, as you can see That's all I have.
Councilmember Doogan.
Just orient me, which one is 700 West Street? Is it the...
For the top picture?
Yeah, which was...
It would be on the left side of the image.
Okay.
On that side.
Councilmember Mono.
I'm wondering, on this proposal right here, why is that into commission for review? Is that going to be a planned development?
It's going through as a planned development to allow multiple buildings, multiple primary buildings.
On one lot?
On one lot.
Okay. Otherwise, it would fit within the RMF 35 zoning, the proposed zoning, is that accurate?
The setbacks and the building height meet that, meet the RMF 35 zoning, but it's...
The overall density as well?
Yes, the overall density would too.
It's just that it's multiple principal dwellings on one lot, okay, thanks. Can I continue? With that, so, I remember seeing this when I was on planning commission, and my one hope for this project, I think, in general, the commission was supportive of it, if I remember, my one hope was that the two end units, there could be special attention paid so that those activate the street and are not only accessed from the, either the walkways or the garages, so that the two facing the street have special frontage design restrictions or requirements. Is that at all part of the planned development that is...
Yes, we have been in conversation with the applicant about that. They have revised their drawings. In fact, I think they have some updated drawings even from this one here. But with this drawing, they've included a balcony on the front, as well as the main entrance on the front, and some change in materials and a little bit of different depths with those materials, trying to improve that appearance on that facade.
Thanks.
Councilmember Valdemaros.
What kind, are this, what kind of housing is this, is market rate or affordable, or is there any breakdown on affordability or market rate?
I don't know.
Okay. And then, apparently next to these ones, there are other, there is other multifamily, another multifamily unit, correct?
Yes.
Adjacent to this property?
Yes, just to the south here are a number of multifamily buildings.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't see, I saw that the Fair Park Community Council saw this, but I didn't see a lot of other comments from the neighbors. Are there concerns, like serious concerns about this project?
There were, essentially from the planning commission minutes, there were a couple that were concerned about the increased density, there were others that were in support of it. We did receive one comment from the Fair Park Community Council with some concerns about what the condition of the property would be.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then we can hear from the applicant if they want to speak. Okay, great.
I'm Christian McMullen, the applicant. So the reason we kind of targeted this zoning was because of the adjacent zoning, we thought it would fit in well with the neighborhood. Just the overall demographics of this area has kind of changed into more of that, like, there's, I see a lot of millennials going into that area because of affordability. And the current zone, just like with a new construction there, wouldn't kind of meet those demands, but a townhome project that we're seeing on the east side a lot, I think would fit really well in with the neighborhood. And with it being on, right on I-15, I think it made sense for more of a multifamily versus a single-family home, because if, you can see right under, this underpass here gets you right into downtown Marmalade, it's a direct shot on Third North, directly to that Marmalade area. So it makes, for transit, there won't be a big, I guess, there won't be, I don't think a large shakeup in the community because there are so many exits, you can get to 6 North Freeway right here, and then Third North into the city, or to North Temple, like, very easily from here. It's a, kind of, and it's a really wide street, so there won't, I know, so some of the neighbors, just, I remember, because I was at all these meetings, I think the main concern was rentals, that they were, they, because they have such a sense of community in this area, that they figured if there was more apartments, that they wouldn't feel the sense of community because they're just tenants, but the project is, the current plan is for sale. So, there'll be, these are condos.
Oh.
Yeah. Owner occupied.
Okay.
Yep. And affordability was kind of our big concern, obviously, there's a housing crisis we're having in the city, and these are gonna be, I mean, it's gonna be, you can't subsidize for sale, it's obviously market-driven, but the plan here is to be under, under $400,000, so, which is kind of crazy that that's affordable these days, but that's just the way it's going, so, yep. So that's kind of, that's, that's the plan. You guys have any questions for me?
Yes, Councilmember Doogan.
So on the north side, you have your apartments looking into the houses below you, and on the one schematic, you just have small bushes, are there gonna be trees, or is it gonna be, what's the setback between your, your building and the houses to the north?
So the no, the north, there'll be, there'll be, there'll be a sidewalk, and then there will be shrubbery of some sort. I know the current fences are six feet, so I don't have, I don't have exact, but like along this area, I don't know what the height is.
And you're not planning on putting up any trees or anything to kind of divide the two?
I think taller shrubbery, but I don't know necessarily about trees, I mean, I think they're, I'm, I'm, so I handed off the construction to CW Urban, and they're the ones that are gonna be building it, and I'm just the, I'm just the landowner getting the zone changed, so I think they're, but I think they're definitely open to doing what it takes to make that more private for the homeowner.
Kind of have the opinion that it'd be nice to have some privacy between, you know, a 35-foot-high apartment building and...
These are, yeah, these are actually gonna be about 29 feet tall, but yeah, no, I know what you're saying, yeah, roughly.
Apartment building looking into my house below me?
No, totally understand.
Yeah, that's why I was just thinking, trees, because on the bottom, I thought those were trees, but not just small bushes that really don't cover much.
Right. Yeah.
Trees are shown on this one. The requirement for the PD application does have trees and a shovel on there, it's just, it's not shown on them, but that's part of the PD.
So the large circles are the trees.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do recall that being brought up by a neighbor at the planning commission, I think that that exact issue was, at least aired at that meeting, so...
And, just to clarify, so the current zoning, I believe, is the same height, it would just be less density, so that the concern would be, like, you could still have a two-story home there with it looking down into your neighbor, so, like, either way, there's probably gonna be a concern from a homeowner, but, so this, like, this isn't adding to the height at all, it's just the density.
Are the setbacks the same with the current zoning?
No.
To the proposed?
I don't think so, I think there's, I think there's a larger offset, but...
So on the, on the setbacks, I'll just go through here real quick, there's no, on the SR1, there are no side yards required along the side lot, excuse me, I'm not making any sense. There's no side yard required along one side lot line while a 10-yard is required along the other.
That's SR1?
Yes, and with the RMF 35, it's interior side yard for multifamily structures are 10 feet.
On both sides?
And there's, there's also the requirement for a landscape buffer between, so on that north line that you're asking about, there's a required landscape buffer that's supposed to be 10 feet wide with fences, shrubs, and trees to buffer that, that impact.
And this is going to be built as multifamily buildings, not as single-family attached dwellings, is that correct?
It will have, the footprint of each unit will essentially be its lot, so it doesn't necessarily meet the definition of single-family attached because they won't have yards or anything like that, but they, each unit will be sold with the land directly underneath it.
Oh, they will?
Yeah.
So then why would it be required, sorry, maybe this doesn't matter.
It's almost like a condo plot, right? But not, it's PD.
Okay, maybe this doesn't matter.
Any other questions?
So, you said that currently it's for sale, but is there a chance that they might become rental, like...
I can't speak of that, but just from what I've seen CW do, is like, it's almost all-for-sale product that they're doing, and the way, just from the planning of the units, I think it makes personally more economic sense to do it for sale, but, yeah.
But that doesn't mean that the individual homeowner couldn't rent out their unit, though?
Right.
Is that what you're asking?
No, no, I'm asking if there's a chance that these units might not be for sale, excuse me, might not, you know, they, they become rentals, and that's what the community is concerned about as they have this closed...
And, yeah, and I think the community was also like concerned about the overall, just like quality of construction, where the tenant, like, if there was tenants in place, like, the quality of the tenant, whereas this, like, is, is gonna be a very, even if it was, even if it was an apartment down the road, like, it would be, they would be expensive rentals. So, it wouldn't be, yeah, I don't know, I don't know if that makes any sense, but it, I think their, their overall concern was like, the, just poor quality, if it was like, if it was, like, they just saw like an apartment build, they had in mind of, just, if we got a rezone, it would be some big apartment building, and that, they, it would be more of an apartment vibe versus homeownership, but, I guess.
No, just a, just a reminder, the, we, I think we like seeing the renderings and helps give an idea of what's gonna happen there, but that, the decision to approve that is not a council decision, the focus is really on, does the zoning, is it appropriate for the area? The building design helps us to see that and to visualize it, but the, really, the focus should be on, is the RMF 35 makes sense for this parcel? Because, you know, projects could come and go, they're in the development process now, but things could happen where they don't get approved, things can change, so the focus is probably better spent on, does the zoning make sense for this parcel, for these parcels? But everything else is also really interesting and fun to talk about.
Thanks, Nick. Based on that, I'm understanding that the setbacks, the overall height will not change or will be more restrictive with the RMF 35, it's just the density that is...
The setbacks will be similar.
Similar.
So, the standard RMF 35 setbacks will apply, which are fairly similar to SR1A. The height will be more, 35 is the allowed height in RMF 35, whereas SR1A would allow 28 feet.
28, okay. But the density is...
The density is the big change.
Okay. Great.
Anything else? Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda is another zoning map amendment at the location of 480 East Sixth Avenue. Thank you. At the table, we have, oh, you're not at the table, Brian Fulmer, Sarah Javronak, did I say that right?
Javronak.
Javronak, and John Anderson.
Nick Norris.
No, we don't, we have Nick Norris. Well, my, this says John Anderson, but yeah, okay, sorry.
We're going to discuss today, as you mentioned, a zoning map amendment for this property at 480 East Sixth Avenue. It's currently under SR1A, which is Special Development Pattern Residential District, and the proposed change is to Small Neighborhood Business District, or SNB. The property currently has two structures on it, one that faces Sixth Avenue, and the other faces G Street, and the two prop, or the two buildings are connected by a common wall. The Sixth Avenue-facing building is used as a hair salon right now, and the Sixth Avenue, or sorry, the G Street-facing home is, has historically been for, used for residential. The proposal would make the legal non-conforming commercial use of the hair salon conforming under the zoning, and it would also allow for a commercial use in the home facing G Street. With that, I will turn it over to Sarah.
Thank you. So you can see the property located here, again, that red bounded area. Thank you. So you can see the property located here. Um, again, that red bounded area is the historically residential portion of the property. And then the remainder to the west is the historically commercial portion. Um, you can see the surrounding zoning here is SR one A, which is the existing zoning. Um, it is one block from CB Community Business where Smiths is located. There was an SNB study completed in twenty-ten or around twenty-ten, um, completed by planning that looked at non-conforming uses throughout the city. And this property was one that was recommended to be considered for SNB. Um, just to show you a little bit more about what the properties look like, um, the left is the cottage portion of the property. Uh, it's one of the earlier structures in the avenues. Um, and then that residential portion hasn't been occupied for quite some time. Sorry about that. And then the right there is the commercial portion of the property where the hair salon is located. Um, I just wanted to outline that the property has gone through some other planning processes. Um, it received HLC approval in November for a proposal to rehab the existing cottage and expand that. You can see on the top right there, um, what it looked like historically, and then the other three images are the proposed, um, rehab of the cottage and expansion. Also went through a lot line adjustment to decrease the non-conforming areas of their property. As far as the proposed rezoning itself, it's compatible with Planned Salt Lake, where the intent is to preserve and enhance the neighborhood. Um, it would retain the structure and it would also support the growth of small businesses. Uh, as far as public comments on the proposal, haven't heard too many. There were some concerns with expansion of the commercial use and the loss of the residential structure, and then also with parking. But honestly, with the hearing, some of the comments were regarding the salon lights, which the applicant said that he would work with the property owner to address. That's it. Did I have any questions?
No. So how is the, um, salon operating right now if it's?
It's an existing non-conforming use. It's been a historically, uh, commercial use on the property.
Okay. And do we know when the last time, I'm sorry if you said this, when, last time when the residence was used?
I am not sure exactly. I know it's been several years.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, you may have just said this, but that's a historic building, right? And so the structure itself, even if it changes to this SNB zoning, would need to remain because it's registered? Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
Correct. It's gone through, uh, Historic Landmarks Commission approval for rehab of the structure.
Okay, great, thanks.
And that's changing the zoning wouldn't change the, because it's still in the historic overlay too, right?
Right.
So.
So you couldn't tear it down?
No.
Change the use, yes, but demolition, no.
Okay. Yeah, just, just really quick, part of the purpose of this proposal is to do just that, is to, is to create more options to help preserve the long, in long-term, the building, so that when economic conditions change, there's not, and, uh, those, those forces that would promote the demolition of it are, are abated a little bit by having more flexibility in the use.
Perfect. All right, any other questions?
Just one, just one question about lighting. Is there a lighting restriction for this zoning at, at night for streets, the building itself? So it doesn't just blind everybody in the neighborhood?
Um, I don't think there are specific lighting restrictions. Um, I know that it was just interior lighting and so the, um, the applicants agreed to work with the property owner on kind of having that, um, be more compatible with the surrounding area.
There's, there's a general prohibition about lighting becoming a nuisance when it's coming from private sources. And, and so that's typical in every, every neighborhood, but not necessarily specific to the zoning district.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Okay, uh, next up, we have, uh, an update on the constituent request management system. And at the table we'll have Weston Clark, Liz Bueller, Aaron Bentley, and Austin Kimmel. And I will note that this is Austin Kimmel's first time at the presenter's table.
It is.
So, it's a pretty big deal. Yes, I will.
Oh, and Weston's first time.
Oh, Weston?
Well, yeah, I mean, in my new role.
Yeah.
I've sat over there for Planning Commission and yes, this is new. This is great, though. Yes. All right. You ready for us?
Um, yeah, let's hit.
I mean, I'll just intro as they get set up, I suppose. Um, so thank you so much for taking some time, um, to let us update you and introduce some of you to a project that's been worked on, uh, far along, or far before I got here. Are we just smiling now?
You want an action shot?
You want an action shot? All right. Obviously, the mayor and, and you all take every concern and feedback as great importance to all who live and work within the city. So led by the mayor's office, we have teamed up with the city council office and every department in the city to create a constituents relations management platform, CRM. And this is using Salesforce technology. This technology will help us route and track the progress of each concern that is reported to the city. Uh, and last week, we actually went live with a portion of this, uh, of this potential, um, or of the potential of Salesforce. And this was routing requests for information, um, using Salesforce, and we'll explain a little bit about that in a minute. Soon, we're going to be routing all inquiries into the city through Salesforce. Um, right now, departments across the city are working to create web forms, which allow residents to support, or to submit inquiries directly into this new system. And these are called web-to-case forms. Obviously, the goal of this is to increase transparency, increase customer service, and ensure that when someone comes to the city, there is no wrong door, and that we will equitably be able to address their issues and ensure their completion. As a new person to the city, obviously, I got to sit among very smart people who have been working on this for a very long time, including council staff. So they are going to provide some history and provide a demo to help you understand this system, and then we are happy to take some questions afterwards.
Great. I'm really excited about this, actually, so.
So just, sorry, just to give you a brief history, um, implementation of the new CRM platform, Salesforce began in fall of twenty-seventeen. And some of you are probably aware, we had a previous CRM system that began in twenty-fourteen. You might know it as SLC Mobile or City Source, depending how you access it on your phone or on a desktop. And that system worked well. It's still our public face for CRM, but it, we really needed a more comprehensive system to better fit our, the city needs. So early work, um, in Salesforce implementation really started with identifying those needs across the city and developing common standards and practices and mapping department workflows. You're going to hear throughout this presentation about these common standards, these common practices, because really, up until a few years ago, each city department had its own processes for responding to constituents. And that's great, depending on the software they use, different things, still responding to constituents. But when a constituent reaches out to Salt Lake City, it's not about reaching out to community neighborhoods or public services. It's about reaching out to Salt Lake City. So really, Salesforce is allowing us to have a consistent Salt Lake City response to our constituents. And because of that, we really split implementation into two responsibilities. We have the technical implementation, the software, which IMS, led by Aaron Bentley, is doing a great job with. But also, it was very important to also concentrate on policy, and it's not just a software solution. So the policy development is led by the mayor's office with very strong support from city council office, as well as service departments, community and neighborhoods, public services, sustainability, public utilities. Those divisions that provide a lot of services and also get a lot of calls, emails, questions from constituents. So in implementation, and this has been a really wonderful joint project from the mayor and city council offices. I, I can't emphasize enough how much your own staff, because they're often the front line, have received this. Our mayor's office have really led this, and that leadership really encouraged all city departments to participate in this project and in this implementation. And in fact, all departments, um, send representatives to a monthly CRM management committee. And what that does is that management committee, most decisions for the CRM implementation in the system, they're reviewed by that committee, and they, they approve those steps. So that's everything from the vision document, which we'll get into a little bit, but also from what service, what should the names of the service requests be that are public-facing, things like that. Also, we've, um, again, adopted common standards and terms across the city. When we close a case, that's the same if CAN closed that case, or if public services closed that case. Something also very important is that we surveyed existing City Source users and also people who haven't used City Source, but they've reached out to the city in other ways, email, phone, to identify what their preferences and needs are, because again, this is a system that is answering the needs of our constituents. And finally, while we set up this framework, each department, we recognize, has individual needs. So within that framework, we've allowed each department to create their individual plan. So maybe it's, um, how to create their system to respond to their request for information in the web-to-case form. Others, it's, we know we have to tackle service requests first. It's things like that. So again, this whole project implementation, it, the base of it is really the vision and purpose document. And that covers everything. It goes to three basic points, that we want to improve our response to constituents. We want to have a high-level engagement with those constituents. And ultimately, we can use this system to identify and guide improving city services. And as part of that, all types of information the city receives has been placed in four categories. Feedback, requests for service, requests for information, and knowledge. And to better help our city employees understand what those are and those nuances, we actually have clear definitions, which Austin will get into when he discusses workflows. And finally, in this vision document, we have our program management and standards, explaining, there is no wrong door on how you reach the city. You cannot close a case until X and Y is done. When you respond to a constituent, you have to make sure at least these four basic things are included in every response. Things like that. Again, so we're creating a citywide standard on how we respond to constituent request. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Austin to talk about workflows.
Um, so the workflow is kind of our process on how we get, how we route a case from a constituent question or requests for service. It then comes into any of your mailboxes or our office. We will then take that, um, request and be able to put it into the CRM system. And we'll be able to determine whether it's a request for service, whether they're asking a question and requesting information, or, uh, whether we can route them to a knowledge-based form that's online. From here, um, it will then be sent to the department. There will be a, a contact person for each department, who will then gather the information from within their department. And once all the information has been gathered, it will be, uh, either relayed directly to the constituent or relayed back to our office for us to communicate to the constituent. With that, uh, we'd like to show you a demo on, on a case that, um, got sent in by me. Um, this is, yeah, sure. Okay, so this is a test example. Um, this, this is a case where I emailed in, um, requesting that this two-way intersection, uh, sorry, a two-way stop intersection be a four-way stop intersection. From here, I'll be able to open it up just in my email inbox. Yeah. Takes a minute. Yes. From here, I'll be able to make a new case. The contact name, um, if it's somebody who's emailed in before, um, they will already have their own name set up and a list of cases for each, for that person. Uh, the request type, search, um, this I know is going to be sent to the Community and Neighborhoods Department. So I'll send that to CAN Service Request. Um, the subject, I'm just going to put test in there, uh, four-way stop sign request at First Avenue and A Street. And the description will capture the body of the email. And with that, it's already routed to Community and Neighborhoods.
So you can see here, this is the list of CAN Service Request. So this is everything that CAN has received in the past four months, all the cases. So you can see here, we have, we have a new one from Austin. And I click it, and so once it gets to Community and Neighborhoods, it comes to, uh, Community and Neighborhoods Administration, in which civic engagement is a part of. And we read the case and we decide, determine which of the Community and Neighborhood divisions this should be routed to. I see that this is a request to change a stop sign, so I know that's transportation. So I go into the feed and trans, each of our divisions within Community and Neighborhoods, and this is true for most city departments, each of our divisions, we have a contact person in Salesforce who has received training and has learned how to use this system. So for transportation, that is Amy Lyons. So I will tag Amy in this post. Say, and I'm going to put a test, just so Amy knows that this, she does not need to respond, but test. And then, or, we have standard language, and really it's just, we'll transportation look at this case. And I'm horribly misspelling it, so please forgive me. And then, so I share it, and then just as it showed up in my feed, this will then ping Amy and she'll be able to see it. Now, it does take a little while. It's not instantaneous for our transportation division to investigate moving an intersection from a two-way stop to a four-way stop. So what we've done is we've sort of simulated what normally occurs at this point. So you can see, if you go down in the feed, you can see as most cases, we'll transportation, please look at that, this case. That time I did not misspell anything. And then with that, Amy was able to respond. So after it went, uh, to transportation, they investigated the case. They determined that a speed trailer would be placed there to deter speeding at the intersection. So what we've been doing in these situations is that after we've received that response from transportation, Community and Neighborhoods Administration, we respond directly to the constituent with a carbon copy going to the city council liaison who created the case. So you can see here, this was sent to Austin, the constituent, and it's just standard language, "Thank you for contacting us." "Transportation Division has found after review," and then just the standard language and what, what's going to happen. This goes back to the standards, programs and standards. I would not send this email until we know what the resolution will be. This case is placing a speed trailer. We're not going to be placing of adding stop signs to this intersection. So that's why I've responded to this constituent. If, for example, we had a case where it required further investigation and might take a while, then we respond to the constituent saying, "Transportation Division is working on this. It'll take two to four weeks to say the case, and then we will respond to you." But for this instance, again, it's for demonstration purposes only. So that's where we are currently in the system. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron Bentley to discuss where we're going from here.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, please.
So this is if people use the, the app, SLC Mobile, it'll go into this, or is this, is there going to be a new app?
Yeah, I'll, I'll actually talk to that on, on the roadmap of it. And just, just quickly, before I go into that, um, Liz has talked about the uniqueness of this project, and it really has been incredible. Historically, IT would get specs. We would go back in our. Historically, IT would get specs, we would go back in our offices, write code, and then throw it back over the fence and say, here, I hope this works. But over the last couple of years, you've seen a real iterative process and a process where there's a lot of feedback. So it's not what IT thought was needed, but what the departments needed. So if you look at our little roadmap here, as Liz mentioned, we started out with SLC Mobile several years ago, first with Public Utilities with Nick Krieger, and then as a citywide effort under Noel Walkingshaw. And now where we've reached this point last week is this internal request for information and feedback. The next phase, as Weston talked about, is this will sit out on slc.gov. There already are some pieces of it out there, just not quite as publicized. For example, you saw business license a couple of weeks ago. That is also part of this same solution. Those that want to get certified, if they went to emergency management right now, same solution already live. Consumer protection, if you had a complaint as a consumer, already in the system, as well as EEO for HR. So if there were any EEO violations that, or perceived violations by any of our constituents, they would be able to go out to HR's website and fill out a form, and that will do that. So that is the next step, is that all departments and all of slc.gov will have this form that they'll fill out. They can also still call in, as well as they will be able to, in certain departments, use a chat functionality, which we piloted with the justice courts. That's that phase. So request and information or feedback. After that, we are going to move to request for service. So that will be more of the service requests and those type of things that sit currently in city source and SLC Mobile. And then the final piece is to replace SLC Mobile with a newly branded SLC Mobile. The slc.gov and SLC Mobile will look exactly the same. It'll just be packaged in a mobile app. And any changes that the team makes to the website will immediately show up in the mobile app. Calendering, all those type of informational things, things that you want to communicate out to the constituents, it'll be that way. And then the long-term goal is to eventually move to SLC 311. It's not determined right now if that would be a centralized 311 center, similar to what you may see in Provo, where they have a power portion of the city, and so there's a 311 number you call there. And it's a centralized call center, or if it'll be a distributed where through phone technology, we can route it to the right department that way. That's in place in San Diego. So that's our roadmap. We are hoping, our goal for the end of this quarter of this year is to have request for information and feedback on the external piece, and then we'll move on to request for service and the mobile change throughout this year.
And what if somebody just sends an email? Is there a way to put the, how do you put the constituent email in that, into the system? Is there a way to do that?
So, for example, if someone sent you an email, your liaison gets that, and if they have, it will automatically go into the system. So the context of that email sits inside the system. They can do it anonymous as well, depending on how they want to.
Right. Is there a way to set up, like little reminders for ones that have sat for a really long time, or if we tell them, we'll get back to you, you know, next week, and then you can set it so the next week it'll say?
Yes, there's case escalation as well as analytics. All the department heads will have dashboards, interactive dashboards that will show them where their cases sit for their departments as well, as well as council and mayor leadership.
Great. Awesome. Any questions? Councilmember Valdemoros?
Questions? I'm still not, I'm unclear. Maybe you already said it. So this is just for people that will use the app? So if, this is not for somebody that will email us?
No, right now, if someone emailed us right now, any department, this is, it's using this right now. If someone called the council office or mayor's office or any department, this is being used right now. The next phase would be publicly facing on the website.
And the other question that I had, Liz, you mentioned that, well, in the test one, we kind of answered the question, right? Like, so in the future, for things that you cannot, you don't have an answer like right away, will, will we have some sort of standard on, or the expectation for the customer, in this case, or the constituent, from us to say, we'll get back to you 48 hours, two weeks, four weeks? Do we have a standardized time so that people know when, know when to expect an answer?
So we don't have a set timeframe, say, if you haven't heard a response in a week or two weeks, but we do have, we already have in our program standards that, yes, it has to happen, that if, let's say, a zoning enforcement case, sometimes those can take months. There is a standard that it has to, you need to respond to that constituent, letting them know. It could possibly take several months. But as we're in this testing phase and rolling this out, we haven't set those specific timeframes yet, so we can work with the departments to set those standards. For two reasons. One, we don't want to set a standard that is impossible to reach. But also, we don't want to be so lax on the standard that there's no benefit to the constituents. So we're still, those are the details we're working on now.
It would be great, like, to know, because, you know, we don't, we, this is basically solving, you know, an issue that sometimes, you know, we forget, or it takes longer, and we don't have, like, a good answer for the constituents. So this is a really good solution, I feel like. So it would be nice to know if you have, like, a standardized, this is by the time, you know, if you didn't reach, you know, if we didn't get an answer to you, please, whatever it is that you guys decide, but I would encourage that we find some, a good number for the, to set the expectation for the constituents. Thanks.
Mr. Trump?
Councilmember Mono.
Two quick questions. So constituent emails us, the liaison creates a case, and we realize it's something that CAN needs to respond to, but we also respond to the constituent, just so that they know that we read their email. Does that also go into the system, even though that's not really resolving their issues, just saying we heard you and we're moving it on to this person? Or is that all tracked within this?
Usually, we only track or put in the emails that are pertinent for the department to know. Maybe some of our correspondence or your correspondence with a constituent, we're not necessarily going to throw over to CAN for them to view, just to clog up the case.
I think the answer is, it depends on what you want to do. If it would be helpful to include that information with the ticket, you could submit it with the ticket. Otherwise, you can, you can leave it off.
Okay. And then second question, we're at a community council meeting, and someone shows up and says, hey, can you, how do we get, like, a verbal request into the system? Email the liaison, and they would create a ticket? And make sure that we have their contact information, or?
Yeah, if they...
Or tell them to email us?
Yeah. Basically, if they walk into the office, we take down their contact information, and we can create a case in the CRM system without a, without an email. These cases can originate, you know, just from people walking in or phone calls, emails.
Right.
And then we can relay that information back to them. Thanks.
Right. Any other questions? Great, thanks so much. Okay. Yeah, so next is our item agenda number four, consolidated reporting ordinance and community development. We have next to me Jennifer Bruno, and at the table, we have Nick Tarbet.
I'll maybe do, like, the bigger picture overview, and then maybe Nick can get into some of the detail, because this project kind of spans multiple years of councils. And so since we have some new council members, it's probably worth just reminding, revisiting. One of the goals of the previous council was to get an ordinance so that it's really clear for both administrative staff and council what information is expected and what information the council is sort of legally needs in order to make the decisions that they need to make. And rather than having it be, you know, one-off emails for each particular item, having one kind of central place, sort of in the spirit of the consolidated fee schedule, which was another council project a couple of years ago, to have all the city fees in one place so that anyone who's looking for city fees knows where to go. Sort of in that spirit, putting all of the many different requests for information that we have in one place. And so we proceeded to kind of break it down, because it feels it's a big project, into kind of areas of interest, categories. So we already processed the budget and financial information reports. That was towards the end of last year, I think, October last year. So that's where all the sort of expected financial and budget information exists now in city ordinance. This next topic area is community and neighborhoods reports. And some, as we went through it, some felt more like they belonged more in a resolution, because it wasn't about a report as much as it was about an agreement between the administration and council on the process for things, and particularly as it relates to master plans. And it actually codifies what has been sort of years of practice, just based on both branches wanting sort of to remove frustrations from the process that had come from sort of different things over the years. And so I don't know if Nick, if you want to kind of go over. So there's actually two things. There's an ordinance that relates to some community development reports that do feel more like reporty, for lack of a better word, I don't know, informational. And then there's a resolution that kind of goes over process. So anyway.
Yes. So, and that's, it's actually the next two items on the agenda. This one is the reporting ordinance, and then the next one is the resolution for the master plans. So we'll just take them together at the same time. So on the CAN report, there's really just two items in there that the council is trying to put into the reporting ordinance. The first one is the temporary zoning regulations. The council just adopted one of those recently, and there's been times in the past when we've adopted them, but haven't known exactly what the next steps are. We know they last for six months, but we, the council isn't really sure what's going to happen. So this would ask that, once those are adopted, within a few days, and we need the council to let us know how many days you want to hear on this, the administration will need to identify the expiration date of the temporary zoning regulations in writing, and then the steps that will be taken during the timeframe to identify the regulations that will address the topic of the moratorium. So quite often, when a moratorium is adopted, that gives the administration six months to process a planning petition that can either, to go into effect so that the moratorium, so that there's some regulations go into effect. Sometimes they lapse, but typically, some changes need to be made to the zoning ordinance. And so that will just give the council an idea of what the plan is to get those changes adopted. Then the second item is the building permit and plan review turnaround time, and this will really help, excuse me. This also includes the fire plan and public utilities review. And that's just to make sure that we're hearing, we're understanding. Quite often, the council will hear from constituents, hey, my plans are languishing, nothing's being done. This will just give you the information you need so that you can respond to those type of requests and those type of complaints. So any questions on those items?
Questions, councilmembers? Nope.
I guess, so my question to the council that we need identified is, how quickly upon adoption of a temporary zoning ordinance, is it helpful for you to get that information? Staff was...
Right. We left that, we left that purposefully blank, because we didn't, we didn't know how many days you felt was reasonable to expect that information back.
So you don't have to decide that right now. We're talking days or hours? Oh, days, for sure. Yeah. I mean, like we said, it's about a six-month timeframe. So I would, my best guess is within 14 days, it might be helpful for the council to kind of, I'd see what the plan is. Do we have anything else in statute that parallels this at all that we could look at? Not for this item, no. No. So we could, staff could work with the administration to maybe see what they think works for them, and then come back with some options at the next briefing.
Sure?
Yes.
I would like that recommendation, actually, and endorse it.
Okay.
And get some feedback from the administration about what they think, so we get a better sense.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak to that? Okay, I agree. We'll do that.
Alrighty. So we'll do that, and then we'll come back to the council. The next item is the resolution for the master planning process.
So it is. Yes. City council policy and objectives for preparing master plans.
And so, as Jennifer introduced, this was originally part of this reporting ordinance, but as we talked with the administration about it, we realized it didn't quite fit as a required report. It felt more like something that could be, it's a, it's a, it's a practice that's already being done within the city. Planning helps the council know upfront, pretty early on, what the master plan process is, outlines it, gets feedback early from the council members. So this is just something that we've really just wanted to put into resolution so that everybody understands what the process is. Additionally, this could apply to other master planning items that happen throughout the city. Right now, that doesn't happen quite as often as, as well as the process works with planning staff. So the idea would be, by adopting this resolution, it would apply to the other, the other master planning projects that go on. I don't know if you have any questions about this at all?
What is the process for, and just because I recently had a resident ask me, if a resident wants a master plan to be updated, how would they do that? Or what would they do?
So I can give you, we might need to ask the other Nick, the planning director Nick, to come up for this one as well, if he'd be willing.
Nick Norris, if you would come join us. Is that something that typically they would talk to their council member about, or to their mayor about, or could they?
So when it comes to updating master plan, because of the resources involved, whether this is right or wrong, we direct them to council.
Okay.
To get that, to help get that support, because we have so much, we have our own kind of internal priority list of things that we're working on. And if we're going to take on updating a master plan, it means something has to give. Either we need more resource, or some of these other projects have to go away. And so we, we think that that's a more appropriate discussion to have above the level of the planning director.
Okay. And then, so then you just need, like, a majority of council members to want to do it?
Well, there's still, I think, to start the discussion, there still needs to be consideration of how much staff resource we have. You know, for example, last fall, I believe, the council allocated some money to update the North Point Small Area Plan. But part of that was, we don't have the capacity to do that, so we needed more money than normal, just so the consultant could do all of it, if that makes sense.
Gotcha. Okay.
I have a question.
Oh, hold on. I think Cindy Guss-Jensen was going to add to that.
Just an addition to what Nick is saying is that the mayor really is in charge of balancing the workload of planning, and so it, they would get input from the council, and then ultimately, an administrative decision would be a big, bigger part of it, I think.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Councilmember Valdemoros?
So Nick, right now, we don't have a system of updating master plans, like a timeline. Do we, are we, can we consider anything like that, that says, we have, I don't know, 20 master plans, this is the priority, this is the order that we're going to update them, because it's coming up, it's been 20 years, it's been 10?
Yeah, so we don't have a formal system for that. We keep track of it a little bit internally, mainly based on development pressures and how many times we're seeing conflicts between what the city needs are, what the development community can provide, and what the master plans say. And those things don't, oftentimes, don't align. But ultimately, it comes down to having the time to be able to monitor the implementation of our master plan, so we can figure out what's working, what's not, and what needs to change.
So going off of that, is there a best practices timeline for how long a master plan should be reexamined, or?
I don't think that there's necessarily best practices, other than what I just said. What are the factors that are contributing to the need? And those are going to be, those are so dependent on outside forces that the city doesn't control or have really any say in. So it makes it really hard to say, we're going to look at these every five years or 10 years. It should be that what we're doing is keeping track of the existing conditions on more of a five-year basis, so that we're ahead of the trends, and we're ahead of, I mean, five years sounds like a long time, but in the development world, trends are a lot longer than that. I mean, it takes five years to plan and design and finance, and then build and occupy a development. And so it's not as long as it seems. But that's one of the things that we're missing as a city, is that ability to keep track of all of our plans and our trends, so that, so that, one, it's actually an easier process to update them. We know what the issues are, instead of trying to go figure that out every time we look at a master plan.
Well, I was actually thinking the other way, given the age of some of our master plans, that five years seemed really fast, so. Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Councilmember Mono?
So, is there a guideline from the city based on, that would sort of guide how big master plans should be? Because I know there's citywide master plans, but then there's area-specific master plans. Some of them are very large areas, which are nonspecific, and others are pretty small, tailored to one specific neighborhood. Is there any, why did that happen? Is it just those neighbors, those neighbors cared more, so they initiated the master plan, or?
I think, I think it's, you know, I would be guessing, so I don't even know. I'm hesitant to even provide an answer to that. But, from what I can tell, just looking at the history of our plans, and this goes back all the way to the original 19, I think it was 1919, might have been 1918, master plan recommendations for the city, is that, at some point in time, there was this thought that a citywide plan wasn't specific enough and wasn't helping the neighborhoods. And so, that's how we came up with the community plans. And we've used that for at least, we're pushing 40 years. And so, it's, maybe some things have evolved. I'm, I mean, my professional preference is to have more simple plans, instead of trying to figure out all of the details, because in 10 years, you'd never know what's going to change.
By more simple, you mean slightly broader?
So, yeah. So, one of the things that you'll notice in like the more recently updated community plans, the East Bench Plan, the Downtown Plan, West Side Plan, is that we really focus on the areas where change is likely to happen, and less on the, every single neighborhood, where the older community plans focus, put a lot of attention on every neighborhood, even though there may not be anything that changes in the next 20 or 30 years. And so, that's kind of what, what I mean by more, more simple, more direct type of, in terms of geography and, and level of change, and what's an appropriate level of change.
Is it typically something that is, well, the reason I'm asking this question is, there's one specific community council in my district that was contacted by University of Utah professor that wants to make a master plan for them as part of their class, right? So, it's an academic exercise, it's not official in any capacity. But, if this exercise happens and the community really supports it, is there a process for that neighborhood to present it to the council or the planning department and consider using that as a basis to create an official plan, or?
I would, I would think so. I think one of the, one of the hesitations of having, and I think that this, this resolution is broad enough that it would avoid this, but one of the hesitations in having a set process is that it may make it difficult for those types of things to happen. There are some cities in the U.S. where all of the master plans are born from the neighborhood on up. So, they do a lot of the legwork, and then, when they get to the city, the city kind of want to make sure that there's nothing really crazy or illegal or discriminatory and things like that in there, which, my understanding is, has happened in a number of master plans even recently. So, not, not in Salt Lake or in Utah. But, yeah, I would think that we'd want to be as flexible as possible. But, again, it comes down to what, what I was answering earlier about the, the resource to be able to do something.
But if the community finds that resource themselves?
I personally don't have any problem with communities taking kind of the lead to get them going, and then getting them to a certain point. That point needs to probably be defined, but before they're handed off to, to the city to be able to do the work.
If I may, I think that happened recently with the Grain Regisstick, right? Then the, there was like a community put together a master plan for their area, and then it was eventually incorporated into the downtown master plan.
Yeah. Some of the key concepts were, I think, probably the more relevant is actually the Nine Line Master Plan, which started as a university project, and then led pretty much to almost an as-is type of thing, to, to the city adopting a master plan for that, that corridor.
My, if I may, just, I think it'd probably be important to help hook that group up with Nick, to make sure that they understand kind of what the city envisions to have within the master plans, because you don't want to get it to the point where it's something completely different at the end, and then there's some, I don't know, some expectations that would just be adopted as is, and there's changes that need to be made. I think I was coordinating this helpful.
Thanks.
And if I may, real quick, in the, in the resolution, it does kind of identify, some of your questions there, Councilmember Mono, where it outlines, there's the general plan, then there's element plans. Those are like the place or the system-based items, transit, transportation master plan are kind of examples of that, the housing plan. And then there's specific area plans. So, we do identify some of the different layers of the types of plans there are. There's always lots of plans, so. And then, I guess, one other, one other item is just, one really important part of this was the fact that it's trying to get the council's participation early on. Not that the council is going to be directing it, but we found quite often with master plans in, in the past, when they were brought to the council, it was really the first time the council members had been able to see it and chime in, and that was after the, the planning commission had made a recommendation. And there's always lots of good ideas and suggestions that could have been incorporated sooner, because you're hearing lots of feedback from the community, you're really involved with the community members. So, it was important to get your input in early, so that they can move on from there. So. So, next steps on this, are there more questions, or do you want the next steps at this point? It could be, we, we've sent this to the attorney's office to look at, just to make sure we don't have anything too crazy. They provided some feedback that there's some minor changes, nothing substantially changes it. So, we'll forward that to all the council members, and then we can, you can consider adopting this at a future council meeting, if there's no questions or concerns.
Well, maybe just add one, one of the, something to think about is that there may be some plans that other departments are working on, that have not necessarily followed this. And so, it might be worthwhile to kind of have a catching-up type of session with those, those plans. I think one of them, obviously, and I have no idea what the council's involvement has been early on with like the Parks Master Plan, but that might be one that just jumped to my mind, that, that I don't know if they've gone through the same kind of, kind of process, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. Okay.
Thanks, Nick.
So, next we have, actually, we're scheduled for a, for a brief break, but we're ahead of schedule, oddly. Do we want to hear, yeah, I think we do. Let's hear the grant applications. This is item seven through nine. Wait, hold on. No, we're not.
Maybe not.
Oh. Yeah. Where is John Larson? He was in here a minute ago. Oh, aha, he's hiding. Well, we were scheduled to take a break in 15 minutes, so we could either start this, if you think you can be done in 15. Okay, let's do it. Okay. So, coming up here, so we have Sylvia Richards from the council staff, and then John Larson from Transportation.
So, basically, this is an opportunity for council members to ask questions about the grant process or specific grants. And there is a current trend right now of the city applying for and receiving a greater amount of grants. And some of the transportation grants commit future funding for the match, the city match, the city required match, while other grants are introducing new funding sources without requiring that local match. John is here from the Transportation Division. There are some policy questions listed on page two and three of the staff report. And Ben is joining us.
And Ben Ledkey, council staff. I did have a question on the Second South Transit Corridor one, where the Transit Center will be located.
Yeah. I'll start with, I guess, the bad news. Unfortunately, UDOT deemed that, we applied for 11 projects with the, this new pot, and it's the first year where they've opened it up for cities to apply for, they call it their TIF, which is confusing, I know, for those that deal with the financing world. But, it's a Transportation Investment Fund is what they call it. And this is the first year open, so we applied for pretty much as many projects as we thought made sense, knowing that they wouldn't fund 11. But, it's the first year, and we want to see what would stick. And we were pretty open with them about that, and they've been supportive. And out of those 11, this is the one that they deemed not eligible, based on the legislative rules under which they can program the funding, unfortunately. However, the project, it's on the bond list, and we're still moving ahead with it. And we'll look for other funding sources as well to help supplement city funds. So, to the question of the Transit Center, really, it could be anywhere between State Street and Seventh East would probably work. UTA has identified a need for years of having an east downtown transit hub. And so, that's going to be part of the study, is figuring out where exactly that goes and what it actually looks like. There's a potential that if we, if we had to, we could do something entirely in-street within the right-of-way. But, I think ideally, we would also have that combined with some off-street elements. But, stay tuned. We don't, we don't have the answer yet for that.
Okay. I had a question, too, about the, the one on the 800 East Neighborhood Byway. So, is that just, starting at K Street, is it just to cross South Temple, or is it going to be up further on K Street?
We, we could extend it further if we, if we needed to. I think at some point, the topography kind of becomes a constraint. But, yeah, the majority of the investment with the neighborhood byways is helping to get people on foot, or bike, or scooter, across the really busy intersections.
Yeah. And, well, and it says like, will there be a signal? And there, I don't think there's very many signals in the avenues, across rocks, except for.
Yeah.
So, I wouldn't expect that to go far up K Street if, yeah, okay. Okay. Good to know. Anyone else have grant application questions? Okay. Looks like we're done.
Okay.
Hey, and we're still ahead of schedule. This is great. I'm just, I seem overly excited because I, this doesn't usually happen to me. So, it's a new sensation. Okay, well, I guess we'll just take a break then. And we don't have, our next item that's coming up, the Utah Road Map, isn't set to start until three or four, right?
Right. But, we could start, we could start whenever, whenever you feel like starting. Did I hear someone say Natalie was out in the hallway? Or is that, did I make that up?
No.
We can see, we can see where Natalie is, and how far away she is, and then adjust from there during the break.
Okay.
So, maybe plan on reconvening in 20 minutes.
Yeah. Let's, I was going to say 30.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
So, 3:45.
3:45.
3:45. Okay. Talk to you then. Talk to you then.
Natalie County Association of Municipal Councils is a group that is sort of a sister organization to the council of governments. Salt Lake City Council does have a seat on the council of governments. Is that being filled by?
No, not my knee.
I was, but I'm going to miss next one. But yes.
Yeah.
All right. So we have that seat, but then there's a seat on the county association of councils. So that's getting together with other council peers in the Salt Lake Valley. The meeting timing is a little bit difficult. It's the second Tuesday of each month from noon until 1:00 p.m. And it's at the Murray City Council office. And so we need to check to see if anyone on the council is available to do that. It's right in the middle of the chair vice chair agenda, so it can't be the chair or vice chair.
Except that it is. Right now.
Right now it is.
It's Andrew.
That's the other one.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
And that's at a different time. So is there anyone that has free time on the second Tuesday of each month from noon until 1:00?
Does it have to be one person or can we take turns?
It's nice to have one person because then you have some continuity in developing the rapport with people and it's sort of an ongoing conversation. But at the same time, they would, I'm sure, be happy to meet new people too.
Right.
And it's a nice organization. It's been productive over the years. They used to meet on Saturdays.
Oh.
So this might be better than a Saturday. So, think about it.
Is anyone interested?
I think you would probably discuss shared issues. You know, maybe during the legislative session, you would talk about the latest on the issues relating to persons experiencing homelessness or the inland port or other legislation. Other times, just any type of issues that you have in common with other governments in the valley. So there's a fairly good-sized social component of it to just share ideas and share issues.
I'm available at that time. I don't necessarily have strong feelings that it should be me, but I am available if that's, if no one else.
I think Councilmember Mono is the
I second.
Great idea.
Right, yeah.
I think he's highly qualified and think he'd do a great job.
And I can, Councilmember Mono, when you're unavailable, I could be, you know, the backup if you'd like.
Okay. Great. So we'll have a primary member and a backup. Thank you. And then two other things. One is written on here, the Community Wildland Protection Plan. This is a group that meets to look at shared resources to address the wildland interface areas all around the benches of the city. And Councilmember Luke served as a liaison on that. And Councilmember Wharton is interested in filling that slot because of the interface in District Three. There are a few meetings per year and they, occasionally, there's a budget request that comes out of it, but it's more of a collaboration between entities. So then also, the council chair was asked to serve on a committee relating to the Olympics. And that, did you have one meeting so far?
We've not had our meeting yet, but we will have it next week. And I think they said there are 64 people on the board, so I'm looking forward to having a lot of sway. So, yeah. They were going to do 67, but I was like, keep it at 64. Yeah, let's, we don't want it to be too big. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, yeah.
So Natalie is here.
Oh, great. Wait, so we don't need anyone for that?
Well, it's you unless you
Oh, that's right.
Unless
It is me.
Because the other likely
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Person would be Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah.
Do you want him to, do you want to see if he wants to be
Do you want to be the backup on that?
On the wildland
The wildland interface one?
Okay.
When did I get assigned to that?
I don't know. I thought you assigned yourself, but I guess not.
I probably did, but I just don't, I don't remember when.
All right. What if we get some more information for the two of you and then you two talk?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So now we'll go backwards to item 10 on our agenda, which is the Utah Roadmap, Positive Solutions on Climate and Air Quality. And our guest is Natalie Gartner from the Kemsey Gardner Policy Institute. Good to see you again.
Great to be here. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
So just again, Natalie Gartner with the Kemsey Gardner Policy Institute. I direct the institute and we really love the opportunity to come present to the city council about once a month. And today, what the topic is that they wanted us to present on is the Utah Roadmap. And so a copy's been passed out to all of you. Before I jump into that, I just wanted to mention that I also brought all of you a copy of this booklet, which is called Utah-Nformed. They're kind of back in the offices there, but you'll see a copy for you. This is this wonderful piece. You can see it's just all data. And it's a compilation that our institute does each year of the data we think you need to know in our state to make informed decisions. And it's just an incredible collection of trends. So you have a copy out there, just that you might enjoy having. So the background for this document is that the Utah Legislature, in the 2018 general session, passed a concurrent resolution called HCR-7. It's in the roadmap in full, but basically making a policy declaration that the legislature wanted to make sound, science-based decisions in regards to air quality and climate. And then in the 2019 session, the legislature asked the Kemsey Gardner Policy Institute to prepare a roadmap for the legislature on air quality and a changing climate. And this is the product of that appropriation. It's one of these things where the money came in July and we had a December deadline. So in six months, we had to put together this work. If you look on the very back cover, it lists a group of 36 some odd individuals, including Vicky Bennett from the city, who helped inform this process. And I'll just note, if you turn in a page and look just inside the inside cover, you'll see a picture of these folks. It's actually kind of a neat thing because it is a picture of a multidisciplinary team from the University of Utah, Utah State University, climate scientists, health experts, regulatory agencies, Salt Lake City, and the like. And all of us, in a very intense effort, came together to talk about what is the right roadmap for the state. I want to make really clear that the audience for the roadmap was the Utah Legislature, and that really informed everything we did. They asked for it, they paid for it. And so to try and get a multidisciplinary group through a, you know, audience-focused process that was transparent, very structured, and even had a public availability period, this was the product of that effort. We did focus groups all around the state as part of this work. We were in Duchene City, we're in Richfield. We even did a focus group of legislators, which is an interesting experience, right? Because they're the decision-makers, but you're putting them in a focus group. And a lot of things came out of those focus groups, but one of the things that came out was give us five things. Don't give us a massive report. Now, I might mention that during Governor Huntsman's time, this is dated 2007, this was something called the Blue Ribbon Advisory Council on Climate Change. Governor Huntsman commissioned this. And it's obviously very in-depth, incredibly science-based, and we felt no need to do this again. And in fact, we did review it and concluded that the things, the data items and conclusions here were all still relevant today. So it gave us a really good foundation to build upon. So in the spirit of that, I'm going to take you back to this document right here. If you just open it up to the, it'd be on page two, we list seven things. So remember, they said, give us five, and we got seven. Not bad, right? Not bad. And so these are the seven mileposts on this roadmap to cleaner air and to address a changing climate. And rather than go through each in detail, I'll let you pepper me with questions about them. I'd just like to highlight a few of them. The first one, I believe, is the most important of them, and that was for the state to adopt emission reduction goals for both criteria pollutants and for greenhouse gases. And this group even made a recommendation of what those goals should be. The reason I feel like that's so important is that we've defined victory, said where we're trying to go. And in the page that's adjacent to these goals, you see these two graphics here. These are emission baselines. So if you're going to have a goal, you better measure it. And to get this technical group to agree on what is the emissions baseline projection without us doing these things is a pretty hard thing. And so just to get these two graphics agreed upon was a really big step. And the top one shows you the air pollutants or the criteria pollutants, and the one on the bottom shows you the greenhouse gas emissions. And you'll see what the projections are, and then you'll see a big thing that says the goal. And in both cases, you'll notice the goal is lower than what the most likely trend is. So we've got work to do, is really the conclusion. Two other items I'll highlight of the mileposts, and then I'll just open it up for questions. But we encourage the state to lead by example. And that was milepost number two. So the state is one of the largest employers in the state, has tremendous capacity to play a leadership role here, and we recommended that. Three's quite interesting. Three is the recommendation that the state create a premier air quality-changing climate research laboratory. And this was a recognition that because of our topography and because of our research universities, just because of the things we know, the things we're impacted by, that we should have the best science available. And it became clear to me as a non-physical scientist, I'm more of a social scientist, but that our monitoring networks and such are insufficient to the task. So that was the point on number three. And then the last one I'll mention is milepost seven gets probably the most attention when it comes to a changing climate. We recommended that the state of Utah participate in a national dialogue about market-based approaches to reduce carbon emissions. And you can imagine, I should mention that that photograph there that I showed you at the back not only includes all the scientists, you know, the National Weather Service and the like, but it includes Rio Tinto, Dominion Energy, Rocky Mountain Power. So the real achievement of the roadmap was to get this diverse group of people to advance this collectively. And that milepost seven was the agreement that we received for how to approach reducing carbon emissions. And the principles are that it's better to do it at a state level, sorry, at a national level than a state level, so you don't disadvantage your state, that it's best to do it in a way that is, that benefits from the thinking of being revenue-neutral and border-adjusted. And those are the kinds of things that you can do at a national level that you can't do at a state level. Okay. With that, I just will open it up for your questions and comments. Happy to be helpful. Our goal at the Gardner Policy Institute is to help people make informed decisions, and we appreciate our partnership with the city and believe that this can also be helpful to the city, even though the audience was the legislature. So with that, Mr. Chair.
I have a question.
And Councilmember Valdemaros.
Thank you so much for this, and this is awesome that the state kind of commended you to do this. What are the next steps for them and then for us, if there's anything that we ought to be doing?
Right. The Gardner Institute has done its role in terms of preparing the information and the data and communicating actual recommendations. We don't engage in advocacy. So I would not be someone up on Capitol Hill lobbying for the roadmap, for example. But what we do is answer questions, testify, present our work and the like. I'm seeing a lot of things happening. So I'll give you a couple of examples. That notion of a premier research laboratory, I've already had a call from Alan Matheson about how he thinks the Pointe du Mountain would be the perfect location for that because they're trying to do a university collaboration. So a seed was planted.
Okay.
There is, obviously, Governor Herbert, in his budget proposal, did some really forward-thinking things that are consistent with the roadmap. He put in a massive recommendation for EV, electric vehicle infrastructure, charging stations, and also for the double-tracking of front-runner. Those would both be entirely consistent with this. So in making that happen, this becomes, you know, helpful. And I know that there's two or three other pieces of legislation where legislators are using the roadmap as a way to say, this is the right way to go. So those are just a few examples. I have a feeling that it will build over time.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Fowler.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Hi, it's good to see you.
Good to see you again.
What do you think for cities is going to be the hardest challenge in trying to make sure that we adopt this and in talking with our legislature in trying to have some policies set up for this? And so the sort of the challenges that you see for local government, local officials? And what can we do?
Yeah. I think the biggest challenge is that the things we're talking about here don't follow city boundaries. And so it's, in the case of air quality, it's very much a regional issue. And of course, with the, with changing climate, it's a global issue. So you're doing a lot of what would be consistent with the roadmap, leading by example, obviously doing that. I think the city can be enormously helpful in helping, helping show other local government entities and helping to show the state what responsible stewardship looks like. And as I say that, the real challenge is how do you do it and keep a strong economy at the same time? And that was, we also had economists on the, on the team, the technical advisory team. And I think it's important to move things with balance, because it takes a strong economy to address a lot of these issues. So those are just some ideas, but city government is really at a disadvantage because the issues are regional. But city government is really at a disadvantage because the issues are regional. Yeah.
Councilmember, other questions? Councilmember Johnston?
Thank you again for this, and I appreciated the morning unveiling and the Q and A, so I appreciated that very much.
So this was the release of the roadmap at a newsmaker breakfast, and the councilman was there. I noticed that you were standing most of the time. So you were easy to see. But we appreciated your support that day.
If I don't stand, you usually can't see me, so. Even when I do stand, you can't see me. So you mentioned the 2007 Blue Ribbon Commission, I believe it was called, right? Much more in-depth, and I haven't read the thing frankly. I tried to skim it, and it was tough. Do you have a sense of what's changed perhaps between now and then? Because the underlying science and the recommendations haven't evolved too dramatically, but.
Yeah.
Do you have a sense of that?
I do. I would highlight two things that have changed dramatically. For me, so the public policy work that I've been a part of in this state has spanned over three decades, and I've never seen a time when so many things are aligning to be helpful here. And usually, for big change to happen, the economy has to align because the economy is just such a big force in our lives. And the absolute change in energy, the transformation that's occurring. And if I were to point that out to you, we tried to highlight this. If you go to page eight of the roadmap, you'll see a graph there that shows the cost of utility-scale solar versus other sources of energy. And so that orange line, over time, in 2009, unsubsidized utility solar was the most expensive in terms of levelized cost of electricity, and now it's become the least expensive? And it's in unsubsidized terms? That's a dramatic change. So that's the biggest, is that the energy sector is transforming right in front of our eyes in these new innovations and changes. The other thing I'd point to, and it's also very visual in the roadmap, if you turn to page three, do you see me keep having to pull it far enough away from my eyes? I should have put on some glasses. Okay, on page three, that bottom graphic that shows CO2 emissions, see those step downs up there in the electric power sector? And it goes from being the largest contributor to greenhouse gases to, I think, the second smallest? You can just see it visually there? That's dramatic, right? And this is the transition of coal-fired power plants to natural gas and the closing of coal-fired power plants. And if you look in the footnote, it mentions the notional closures. I'm putting the air quotes on "notional" because I've never really heard that term before applied like this. But that's what Rocky Mountain Power asked us to use, notional closures of Huntington and Hunter Power Plants. And that's what makes these steps. So it wasn't but 10 years ago, you wouldn't have expected that. So I think the difference in energy, the difference in people's education levels about the challenges make this a very remarkable time.
Mr. Chair, may I ask another question?
Yeah, of course.
The legislature commissioned this, correct?
Yes.
Who was it presented to, which committee or subcommittee?
You know, it's interesting. So this came not as a bill where they, you know, gave you real specific instructions. It was just an appropriation with intent language. And the intent language is actually in here, but if I could remember it, I'll read it here. It just says, "Funding provided by this item, you know, is allocated to the Gardner Institute for the development of an air quality and climate research study." That's about all the detail we got. But it was, I would characterize it as a leadership priority. So in reporting back, like when I said we had a focus group, we went to leadership and said, "We care what you think. Can you assign us some legislators to talk to?" And they did. And throughout the process, in fact, the process is shown on pages 20 and 21 across the top. You'll see there's little legislative updates. So it's been a little less formal than might be common, but it's been delivered to them, they know what it is. And all of the information and data is right there to go do these things.
So if we were talking about it with legislators, we assume that leadership has disseminated it? Or what is your sense there, do you have any?
So they've talked about it in their caucus meetings. We've delivered copies to legislators. We've been asked to present about it, but only in small settings, not in a formal. I'll give you an example. You could envision a resolution to adopt the Utah roadmap. And I know there had been some talk of that. If that were happening, we would be testifying about it. But I believe the path that it looks to me like they're taking is to adopt features of it in legislation. So Representative Lowry Snow has the electric vehicle charging station legislation, and he's using the roadmap to help with that. So they're kind of using it in a less structured way, but I think it matches their style and how they like to do things.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting, for sure.
Can I, oh, Councilmember Dugan.
So I love the document. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
You know, I'm a big push for our health and our planet's health, and then we'll get to the profit side of the house. We take care of the first two. And I look at this and I go, "Are they absorbing it?" You know, in 2007, you know, the state was definitely not going to absorb the document. But now, are the legislators absorbing this document and kind of going, "I need to take it"? I mean, if you look at the rural communities, number six is about impact on the rural side of the house, where the coal plants are. And now, are they absorbing it and saying, "Yes, I can..." And the state's going to give them the power to help them out, to help their constituents out?
Right.
Did you get a sense of that, or are they just kind of still poo-pooing it?
I think there is a mixed reaction on Capitol Hill. I don't know a lot of details about that, but I've had a couple legislators that I know aren't liking what they see that want to talk to me, for example. Those conversations haven't happened yet. And then I've had a lot of legislators that have been very pleased with it. It was written for them, in language for them, responding to a lot of the issues that they raise. I'll give an example. A lot of people want to know what the Salt Lake City International Airport contributes to greenhouse gas emissions. And that's frequently talked about on Capitol Hill, so we put it in here. You know, things like that, just because we, that they were the audience. So I don't want to, you know, represent anything other than they asked for it, they paid for it, they're using it. It's inspiring a lot of conversations. And I think it will continue to build as a guiding document. I'll also mention that it's, the business community has an important role to play here, and I know that a lot of business leaders have reacted quite favorably to it. And so that will be interesting to watch as well.
So it doesn't, it seems like the recommendations are primarily market-based. But that isn't necessarily part of the charge. Is that because you didn't want to go into recommending specific policy changes? Because that could be advocacy?
Not so much. Because the legislature specifically asked us to give them recommendations, we were okay going into that part of the advocacy role. The reason you see market-based emphasis is that this was a group process involving, you know, multidisciplinary thought, and the economists were persuasive enough to say, "Use the market to get this done." So I will note that there, we highlighted seven, but on pages 16 and 17, there's about 57 more ideas that came through our process that were represented as part of the solution. And many of these are more regulatory in nature.
Okay.
So they're there. But I would also say to you that the audience was the legislature, and so we advanced ideas that we thought had good thinking behind them, good science behind them, and had potential to make a difference.
Okay. And I obviously haven't had a chance to read all this, but on milepost number four, you talk about more transportation choices. It does, I'm surprised that transportation isn't more, public transit isn't more prominent.
Yeah, it wasn't pulled out more.
Is it, is it going to be when I read it?
I hope so. There's more detail on miles post four under, well, on page 13. So under "Provide Transportation," "Increase Investment in Transit and Active Transportation Infrastructure" and specifically "Frequent and Convenient Bus and Rail Service That Builds Ridership and Connects Residents with Opportunities." So there's some of that language in there. It certainly wasn't intended to, it actually, it wasn't intended to be de-emphasized, and it actually was one of the areas where there was most agreement. You know, in my opinion. We kept having these meetings and discussions, and sometimes I wasn't there, and I would say to the staff, "What are they coming out with? What's starting to resonate?" And transit was very high, so.
So then why isn't it more prominently in the report, just because people?
Well, it is a milepost. What we, I guess what you're saying is, we could have had a single milepost that was just transportation.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, for whatever reason, we decided to put it with quality growth efforts together. And I, my guess is that the connection between land use and air quality and transportation are so tight that, and housing, because of, you know, land use, that we just felt better advancing it as a package. I hope it doesn't de-emphasize it because, you know, when the governor put, was it 30-something million in his budget for the frontrunner? That, we viewed that as very consistent with where this recommend, recommended.
Councilmembers, any other questions? Nope.
I don't have a question, but may I say something?
Yes.
Natalie, I just want to thank you for this work and for coming here and giving us a presentation on this. I always like hearing from the Kim Gardner Policy Institute would always, you do a lot of really good work, and I appreciate you taking time out of your day to come down here and give us this presentation because it's very helpful. And you've done it in other areas as well that have always been very helpful, so thank you for that.
Thank you for that. I wanted to close by saying that the Gardner Policy Institute has a strategic partnership with the city. And we view our presence in the city, our proximity to City Hall, as really important. And we have partnerships with the capital city, the capital county, and the state, and that's by design. We're trying to make the Gardner Institute be the Brookings Institution, the AEI of Utah. And we couldn't do that without a lot of partnership with people like you. So the ability to come share our work and make it real and help you as elected leaders is core to our mission. And so I'm glad that it seems to be working. We're grateful for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Does anyone want me to leave the big Huntsman report?
Okay. So, yeah, we'll move on to item number 11, the state legislative briefing. And we'll have at the table Lynn Pace, Senior Advisor for Intergovernmental Affairs.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for having me, it's good to be with you. The, we were at a, it was part of a teleconference earlier today where they said the session is approximately halfway over, which means that there's only 90% of the work yet to be done. So that may be a slight exaggeration, but not a lot. We're at the stage of the session where there, where the big ideas are still brewing, but may not have come out yet in terms of bills. So we hear lots of talk about an idea that is being discussed, but we may not have legislation, language in front of us to review yet. And the reason that is, is because the things where it's easy to reach agreement, those come out early and everyone plays nice. And the ones where it's more difficult to reach agreement, you keep working and it takes longer to try and come up with something. And so those bills tend to crop up later in the session, which means you have less time when they do, when those bills do come out, you have less time to deal with them. So anyway, but in, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to run through a sort of, just a laundry list of things that I think are currently brewing, and then respond to questions, or we can reverse the order if you'd like.
No, let's do that first.
I'll hit the highlights, and when you have questions, just interrupt me. One of the bills, one of our top priority bills that has come out, just came out last week, was House Bill 347. That's Representative Gibson's inland port legislation, or the amendments to the inland port legislation. The mayor and others have been working very, working very hard with Representative Gibson. It addresses a number of the areas we were concerned about, land use authority, tax, division of tax increment, board appointments, boundaries, and makes at least some references to environmental protections. We'd like it to be stronger, but it's, but I think it's certainly a step in the right direction. We are very pleased with the cooperation and the support we have received from the state, specifically from Representative Gibson on this issue. And for those who are adamantly opposed to the inland port or to the state's control, I have to acknowledge that those things are not going to change. But this does represent, if this bill passes, it will provide a much more balanced partnership between the city and the state in some of the areas that matter most to us. So we're pleased with that bill that just came out. And there may still be some wordsmithing, the attorney's office is looking over that to make sure that it's, the draft is actually all of what we had hoped to have in the bill. So I will defer to them on the details, but on the whole, we're very pleased. There's another bill also addressing amendments to the inland port drafted by Senator Escamilla. Her bill addresses some of the same things, specifically board representation, a mitigation fund for the community, and some environmental or recycling efforts for materials there. But the, I don't know if those bills will be merged, or if one will pass and the other won't. Given that Representative Gibson is in leadership, obviously, I think that's the bill that we will all want to watch. But we are certainly supportive of the concepts that Representative, or Senator Escamilla is raising as well. So unless there's any questions about that, I'll move on. But I think, on the whole, I would say that's moving in a very positive direction relative to what we had hoped to accomplish when the session began.
Can I, Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, Councilmember Fowler.
You know, I think it's very important for us to maintain our, a good relationship with our legislators that represent the city and the West Side. Is there anything from your perspective, Lynn, that we as a council should do as far as reaching out to Senator Escamilla, telling her ourselves? I'm sure you have said, you know, "The city, the council, they all support your bill." I don't think it's going to go anywhere, I'll be honest. But I want, again, it's important. One of the things that happened during the inland port two years ago was, or three years now, almost, right? Was I think some of the legislators that represent that area were upset, thinking that we had more information than we did and didn't reach out to them, right? And so we've worked really hard on kind of mending those fences. And I'm just curious if there's anything that you think we should do to reach out to Senator Escamilla?
Thank you for asking that. We have, as you say, regrettably, the dialogue in years past has not been as good as it should have been. And we have made great efforts this year to make sure that they have been involved. I have met with them, the mayor has met with them individually, collectively. One of the challenges we've got on this bill, and I have to say, our Salt Lake City legislators are so supportive that whatever it is we really need, they are there for us. And Senator Escamilla has always, has always been there for us. The challenge we've got here is that this, this whole inland port concept is something that was driven by the House, particularly House leadership. And, and they sort of own the issue. And so, just to give you a, for instance, Representative Gibson's bill would remove some people from the board and add some people back in, keeping the total membership at 11, but it would create a seat for the mayor. We support that. Senator Escamilla's bill would leave the board membership as is, add two new members, one for the city and one for the school district. We would support that, too. But those two bills are not both going to pass in that fashion. And so the challenge we have, having worked carefully with Representative Gibson, who is, whether we like it or not, a bit of a gatekeeper on this issue, we, the challenge we have is wanting to be supportive of our own legislators without jeopardizing the progress that we have made. So that is, that is delicate, and we have encouraged, I have. So, that is, that is delicate and we have encouraged, I have had just this conversation with Senator Eskamia and she said she would visit with Representative Gibson, see how much they could get together. But she, one of the questions they always ask is, you know, "We appreciate your support, putting, you know, putting this bill on your list, saying we support." That's different than having our lobbyists go out there and actively work to make it happen. And so, the, we have to, we don't want to jeopardize the good that we have accomplished with Representative Gibson by being ungrateful or by pushing too hard. So, that's not a very good answer to your question, but I can assure you, we are keenly aware of it and we are sensitive to it and we intend to continue to dialogue with our legislators.
And as we continue through this list, I would hope that you keep that in mind. Some of us may have different relationships with different legislators, but it is important that we keep the, that dialogue going. If there's anything that we as councilmembers need to do, reach out to somebody. We didn't do our breakfast this year, but we sent up the care packages and again, it just, having gone through that with all of our Salt Lake City representatives, it was painful and...
Yes, for all of us.
Yeah, for all of us. And, you know, it's important for us to maintain those relationships and to make sure we're mending those fences as much as we can. So, if something comes up that, you know, you feel like it would be very important for council to reach out, I would encourage you to remember that we're here to do that.
I appreciate that. I think what we will do is, we have tried to approach this from a consensus point of view, a consensus position from the city and a consensus position with legislators. I think we will, we will have that dialogue and say, "Where is there consensus? Where is there agreement?" And we will certainly support that. But if there are issues where there is strong opposition, I think at that point, we may say that's, you know, a bridge too far for this year. So, okay. Okay. Next this year I want to talk about, and I don't need to go into a lot of detail, given the amount of dialogue that we've already had internally about the proposed RDA legislation. That is still pending. I know there has, have been some talking points that have been circulated, but the bill has not yet been made public. We expect maybe that will happen on Thursday. This is Senator Harper's RDA bill. Our position internally from the mayor's office and the legislative subcommittee meeting group is that while there may be some interesting concepts to think about and to explore, this is much too much to try to get our arms around in one, this session, and that it needs more study. And so, our dialogue with, with our lobbyists, with the League of Cities and Towns, and with Senator Harper, is that we think this, this needs more time and more analysis in order to make sure we understand all of the issues and all of the ramifications of that bill before it were adopted. But since the bill hasn't come out yet, that's really as far as the dialogue has gone. And so, if you have any specific questions about that, I know the politics, I don't know the subject matter, so I defer to something, Katie or Lewis or somebody else on the subject matter, but, so that's where we are on that issue. Another, another couple of bills I wanted to bring to your attention, there are two bills dealing with eminent domain. One of them would authorize eminent domain for trails, specifically inter-jurisdictional trails, trails that extend through more than one city or more than one county. We have historically been supportive of that concept because the city has been a strong proponent of active transportation and the, what trails can bring. There has been strong reluctance to that tool in the legislature. In fact, it was only about ten years ago that they removed the authority of eminent domain for trails. There's a second bill coming from a much different direction and that is a bill that would make it much more difficult to use eminent domain for any purpose. And that is that right now, the standard is essentially if you have a public purpose, you are entitled, the government is entitled to take property, provided you pay compensation, as long as you demonstrate a public purpose for which the property is needed. This bill would require you to show that the property is necessary or that the public purpose is necessary. So, if you couldn't show that this new park was necessary, then you could not condemn to purchase the property for park. So, the long and short of it is that that necessity standard is really very high and very difficult to meet unless you can show you have to have two more lanes on that road. You can't acquire the lane. Anyway, you get the picture. So, both of those bills are working, sort of working their way through the process and we are actively involved in that dialogue. They may get played off one against the other, but we'll see what happens there. And I should say, at this point in the session, very, only, only the very easy stuff has moved through and gotten passed. The other stuff is all somewhere in process. So, when I say things are moving, it just means those bills haven't died yet, but nothing has, nothing has, very few things have crossed the finish line. We're still watching the housing bills. The big issue, the big bill, of course, is Senate Bill 39, which is the bill that would provide funding for affordable housing. We continue to hear that the state budget is tight, that there will be limited money for general fund purposes, meaning non-education purposes, which would include housing. In this bill, the preliminary feedback we're starting to get is that it would be easier to get the, I'm not sure, I forget the right word, McKinney-Vento money, which is education-related because they could use education dollars for that, or some of the one-time money because one-time money is easier to find, but that there is, it is, it will be challenging to get some of the ongoing money that the bill had requested. Having said all that, it's still in process and the state expects to receive budget numbers this week. And after they receive those budget numbers, they will have a better idea as to how much money they have to work with. So, we're watching that process carefully. There's also two or three bills that would affect renters' rights or landlords' rights, one on disclosure, one on unlawful detainer, a third one dealing with rental deposits. All of those we have been supporting and working with the sponsors to craft the language in a way that would help us, particularly with the people who are most at risk in terms of their housing, their rentals, and making sure that they have, that we don't, that we don't make their housing circumstances more difficult than they already are. So, but we're watching those three or four bills. Sorry, I couldn't read my own notes here. Airport. There's a bill proposed by, we expected this to be a quiet airport year, which we thought it would be, but there is one bill that has been proposed that would, in some fashion, suggest that if certain requirements are met, if the FAA said yes, and if, and if, and if, then the owner of an airport located in another city would agree to sell that property to that other city for less than fair market value. That's all code for Salt Lake City's ownership of the South Valley Regional Airport. There are a number of problems with that bill. One is that state law, one is that state and federal law prohibit us from selling property at less than fair market value. But because of, and I don't know a lot about airports, but I've learned from listening, that because of the flight path of Salt Lake City International and the South Valley Regional Airport, because those two flight paths interfere with each other, it would be next to impossible to have someone else owning and operating that airport in a way that might interfere with air traffic at Salt Lake International. So, it's essential for those two airports to be coordinated and their operation to be coordinated and to remain in the same hands. Nevertheless, Representative Coleman feels strongly about this and she not only wanted to, not only wanted to pursue the dialogue, but to release the bill to further pursue that dialogue. For those of you that may not have been aware, last December, Mayor Biskupski and Mayor Riting from West Jordan executed a memorandum of understanding between the two cities where they agreed to dialogue and to talk as frequently as necessary about two areas that are particular, that are of particular interest to West Jordan. One is the soccer, the property that is city-owned that is south of that airport. And if you drive out there today, you'll see a huge, what looks like a huge park with lots of soccer fields. That's city-owned property that can't be built upon because of the elevation of flight path. So, the city leased that property to West Jordan to allow them to put in recreational uses. That lease will expire in a few years and the city of West Jordan is understandably concerned about protecting and continuing that recreational use. There have been some plane crashes on that property, so there are those who are concerned about the safety of the children playing soccer with aircraft flying overhead. All of that, the MOU just said, "We agree to talk and explore options." The city of West Jordan is also concerned about what today, if you went out there, looks like vacant property on the east side of the airport. Again, city-owned, but it looks vacant and unused and the city was interested in knowing how that property could be better utilized to service the airport and to benefit West Jordan. Again, the MOU agrees that the two cities will talk and explore options, consistent with federal requirements and other obligations. We think that MOU is the right vehicle. It's the two parties talking among themselves and exploring options and things that would be to our mutual benefit. We don't think the state-forced model is very helpful or is really very useful in terms of intended outcomes. So, as you can imagine, we oppose that bill. We continue to hear about two or three legislators who have concepts they're talking about for homelessness, one from Representative Coleman, one from Representative Elyson, and there's a third one I'm forgetting. But anyway, we haven't seen any language, just concepts, and, and so we expect that there will be some kind of legislation on homelessness. We don't know yet exactly what direction that's going to go, but we're watching those issues closely and dialoguing with those legislators. There's also a couple of ugly bills that have come out with ideas that, in our opinion, are well-intentioned but not really very well-thought-through. For instance, there's a bill, House Bill 273, that was suggested in a land use context, if there's an appeal of a land use decision to the state property, private property ombudsman, if the city, whatever city it is, does not comply with the ombudsman's opinion and the court later rules against the city, that the, the property owner or the developer would be entitled to compensatory damages and it would waive governmental immunity to the extent necessary to do that. You're all shaking your heads, which is exactly my reaction, that is, no, this is, this is way overblown. What I have tried to explain to people many times, particularly in Salt Lake City, when we make a land use decision, particularly a difficult land use decision, we get shot at from both sides, from the neighbors who don't like it and the developer who wants it. And whoever way we go, we get somebody who's mad at us, right? So, it's not like we're playing favorites. We call it like we see it and we let the grumbling go on. But to expose the city to the risk of compensatory damages, whether it's a planning commissioner or somebody at the permit counter or a city council member, is not only completely inappropriate, but it tips the scale dramatically and sort of chills the decision-making process and threatens officials in a way that I don't think is productive of the outcome. So, we're working, it is Representative Peterson, Val Peterson in the House. So, that's House Bill 273. We are working actively to see if there, if there's something specific they need to address, we're happy to do that. But if they just want to threaten local officials, "If you don't approve our project," we think that's completely inappropriate. So, there's another bill, House Bill 277, that would authorize personal delivery devices. Think of them as sort of little, not drones, but wagons on the sidewalk, delivering groceries or whatever it is. And they envision these to be essentially remote delivery devices. And we think the bill was well-intentioned in the sense that it was intended to allow people to explore this emerging technology. But what the bill does is it says, they, that you can't, first of all, local government can't regulate them at all, on the sidewalk or on the street. They can go at least this fast, they can weigh this much, et cetera, et cetera, all of which would be very difficult, given what we have all been dealing with, with scooters. Imagine that with remote delivery drones on the sidewalk. Again, we're not opposed to the emerging technology and exploring that, but we do need to have regulatory authority to manage the sidewalks and the streets so that we don't have lots of problems, as you can imagine. Yes, Councilman?
I just want to say that I was at Postmates recently at their headquarters and they have, I saw one of these devices. It's just a remote delivery device. It's pretty incredible and I could see them being everywhere, which is the problem, right? Like, we welcome the technology, but there should, the city should be allowed to have some regulations on them.
Right. And in some places, as you know, same with scooters, right? In some places, they have to be on the street. In other places, they have to be on the sidewalk. But this legislation would say they can go up to, you know, twelve miles an hour. Well, on a sidewalk, when you've got school kids or elderly people, that doesn't work and, and we have to be able to tailor that to some extent. So, with your permission, what I'd like to do, this is really being sponsored by FedEx, what I'd like to do is to suggest that they dialogue with Salt Lake City and come to us and create a pilot project here, which is likely where it's going to start anyway, right? And let us work through some of the kinks, let us explore options, and then, as it always does organically, that will spread to other cities once we've worked out the kinks. But, but to do this with a state model first preempting all local control, obviously we don't think that works. So, there has been some, another bill on the table to address the distribution of gas tax within Salt Lake County. For those of you on the subcommittee, you know that the, the current model provides that the distribution of gas tax within the county, it's the BNC road formula, has a floor for counties. So, counties receive no less than fourteen percent of the total, regardless of how many lane miles they have. Well, in Salt Lake County, with the incorporation of the townships and all the unincorporated areas, there's very little unincorporated territory left. So, everyone discovered that Salt Lake County was receiving fourteen percent of the money, but they only had like one percent of the roads and that felt out of balance. There's been a fair amount of discussion about what should happen there. The bottom line is that there will probably be two bills. The first bill will, I think this, this is out already, it's Senate Bill 150, I think, sponsored by Senator Harper, which will take that fourteen percent and lower it to seven percent. So that the, so that there will be an adjustment of that floor for county, for unincorporated counties. And that's, that's bill number one. Bill number two is a bonding bill. And bill number two would take that, the difference between the current fourteen and the proposed number seven, seven percent, and take that money and add it into a state bond so that instead of receiving a hundred thousand dollars a year, we might receive, a hundred thousand dollars a year for ten years, we might receive a million dollars upfront on a, on a bond. So, the, we had initially thought that that might all be in one bill. It looks like it's now it's going to be in two different bills. We have, we made our views known and that was that we would really just prefer to have our money every year and we'll take it from there. They heard us, but they're listening to sort of the broader chorus of voices in Salt Lake County. And the sponsor, who is from Taylorsville and who does economic development for Taylorsville, felt that the bonding for that money was, he preferred that approach. And so, that's the way the bill is headed right now, although the, the percentage bill, the bill lowering the percentage is out. The bonding bill is not out yet because that will be wrapped into a much larger state bonding bill. But that's where those two issues are, where the dialogue is on those two bills currently. There's a number of land use bills, many of which are, again, just in the discussion phase. The land use task force, the league was working with their land use task force on a subdivision bill that I think is going to surface this week. I don't know what, how that will play out and how many of those bills will get legs. But there's, there's always about a dozen land use bills of various impact. There's also lots of water bills, most of those would massage to places where we're okay with them. There's two or three that we're really concerned about and we continue to work on those. One of those today, just today, was a bill that would authorize yurts, remote yurts, and it exempt them all from yurts.
Outdoor tent, semi-permanent.
Yurts are a wooden framework with a stretched canvas over the top. Usually they are about, I learned this today, about thirty feet by thirty feet, so they're as big as this room. So, if you go up to Snowbird, you'll see a yurt where they usually sort of use it as a reception center, okay? That's the, that's the commercial dining type yurt. There's also, if you go up to Bear Lake, there's what they, a group Calistoga, where you can rent a yurt with eight queen beds and luxury dining. They become commercial enterprises. And then there's the backcountry yurt, where you go up, up the canyon and you hike into it and you take your stuff and it gives you a place to stay. So, there's all these different versions. The bill unfortunately didn't distinguish between the various versions, so that, the bill got held in committee this afternoon. But our concern was to make sure, because they were exempting them from fire code, building code, food permits, and wastewater, and we said, "Wait, timeout. At least as to the watershed, we want to make, do what you want if you want to be camping, but we want to make sure we protect the watershed." So, that's the piece we're looking at. But it's, it's bills like that where we're not opposed to what they're doing, we just want to make sure you do it in a way that doesn't damage the watershed or water quality. So, we're working on those. And then there's a few public safety bills as well. We have heard talk of a, there's one bill out already that would prohibit the use of DNA information for law enforcement. We're concerned about the impact of that. That we've also heard talk of a revised body camera, police body camera... We've also heard talk of a revised body camera, police body camera bill, that would flip the presumption, so if for some reason the camera doesn't work or it's turned off, the presumption is, right? And what they're talking about, the ones who are promoting the bills are suggesting that if the camera isn't on, the presumption is the officer had something to hide and he turned it off on purpose. We're not willing to go there. We don't think that's fair, because there may be lots of reasons why either the camera wasn't on or didn't work or didn't get turned on.
Who's that?
It is not yet out, but it is a bill being, it's a bill being promoted by various interests, I don't know who the sponsor is yet, but the ACLU, Libertas, other groups that feel that the burden ought to be on law enforcement if we don't use that equipment. And there's probably a way to sort of find a sweet spot in the middle, but uniformly assuming that it was always wrongdoing that led to the camera not working or not being turned on, we think goes too far. So that's the dialogue, that's the dialogue we're having.
What about the tenants' rights bill?
Tenants' rights bills, there are three bills that are being pursued there. House Bill 211 would mandate disclosure to the tenant upfront of all the fees and costs you have to pay. And if then, when you get to the lease and you get ready to sign the lease, you find out that, oh, actually, you know, there's a cleaning fee and an internet fee and all the fees you weren't disclosed, you have the option of going forward and signing the lease, even though they didn't tell you in advance, or you unwind the deal and you get all of your money back, all of the fees you paid, you get back. That's where that bill is right now.
Okay.
And...
Yeah, that's the one I was asking about, but I'm curious about the other ones.
The other one is, there's a bill on unlawful detainer, that, the unlawful detainer statute right now says you have to give a tenant three business, three days notice.
Calendar days.
And they would change that to three business days, which would give a tenant a little bit more time to find a solution or to find help for that, with the rent. They're also loading into that some pro-landlord provisions, and I'm not the expert, so I'd have to pull the text out to look at it. Our housing allies have said, based upon the language they have seen, they think the bill does more good than harm, and so we should support it. But they recognize that it's a mixed bag. But the bill is not out yet, and that bill, we understand, will be sponsored by Representative Donegan and probably Senator Colomore in the Senate. And then there's the third bill, which I understand will be sponsored by Representative Briscoe, which would make an attempt to standardize the application fee, so if I'm a tenant trying to get an apartment, I don't have to pay an application fee 10 times over, I standardize it and I say, I paid my application fee, it shows my credit history, criminal background check, all these things, so it saves the tenant money, it saves the landlord the expense of having to do that search on it. And I don't know how the bill's going to read yet, because it's not out, but that's what Representative Briscoe is looking for, is streamlining that application process, hopefully, to the mutual benefit of the applying tenant and the landlord. So you don't end up paying a whole bunch of application fees, only to find out that the room's already been rented and you're out your money.
Okay, thank you.
There's probably a lot more, but those are the things that sort of jumped out of me. I understand.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Is there any, I don't see it on the tracking sheet that we were sent. Representative Provost, the one about rent control?
Yes, yes, there is a bill sponsored by Representative Daley Provost that would eliminate the current state prohibition on municipalities imposing rent control. Salt Lake City has not taken a position on that bill. Let me say this artfully, we want to be supportive of our legislators, we also want to be sensitive to the broader disposition of the legislature, and so we, while, depending on the bill, it may be something we feel strong enough about that we want to make a statement, even if the bill has no hope of passing. On the other hand, there may be times when we remain in a neutral position or take no stated position to let the process play out, because this bill is a good example. If Salt Lake City comes out and says, we favor this, that may influence the outcome of the bill.
Right.
They may, legislators may react to it because we took a position. So, there are times when, in order to let the legislature do their policy evaluation without thinking it's a Salt Lake City bill or something we asked for, because it's our legislator, we did not ask for this bill, she did it on her own, but in order to allow that policy dialogue to proceed without being burdened by our weighing in, sometimes the decision is to just wait and see. And I think that's, that was the decision on this bill.
Has that bill made any progress, or is it...
The bill, last time I checked, was still in rules. I think the likelihood of that bill moving is very small.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Valdemaros.
I have a question on the housing loss mitigation amendments by Senator Derek Kitchen.
Thank you, I forgot, that's another housing bill I forgot to mention. That is a bill that would, Salt Lake City has a housing loss mitigation ordinance, which is probably not as strong as we'd like it to be, but it says that if you tear down housing to do something else, you either have to replace the housing or you pay into a mitigation fund. I will say, I used to deal with this 20 years ago, when I was in the attorney's office. Over time, unless you're doing a new housing project, over time, everyone just pays mitigation fund, because it's like $2,000 a unit or something, it's not very much. What this bill would do is, it would be the beginnings of a housing mitigation fund at the state level. And so that's what Senator Kitchen is trying to explore, is if the state does something, if they widen a highway, if they do a project that removes either market or certainly low-income housing, he wants the state to play, to take some ownership and responsibility for mitigating that housing loss. I think that's a laudable goal, don't know how much traction that bill's going to get, but we appreciate the dialogue, because the state has a role to play, obviously.
Any other council, or questions, council members? Okay. Thank you very much, Lynn.
Thank you, as always, if you have questions, please call or text, and let me know, I'd be happy to talk.
Great, thank you. Okay, the last item on our agenda, well, the last item before, well, yeah, no, because we did announcements, so, is a review session on Budget 101, which will be with Jennifer Bruno and Ben Ledke from the council staff. Ooh, and a weighty packet.
Oh, yes. Love a long PowerPoint, don't we?
It's hefty. It means heavy.
He heard weighty, and I heard baby, and we were like...
It's weighty. It's cool. Okay?
Hopefully that next, that fourth screen will start cooperating.
If not, you should have hard copies of the presentation in your red folders.
And then, oh, there we go.
There we go. So the first page for the Budget 101 is just kind of a general statement, that, don't tell me where your priorities are, show me where you spend your money, and I'll tell you what they are. And this gets to the point of aligning your priorities with your spending. Most priorities require some money to happen, and if you don't have the money going to your priorities, your priorities may not happen. So why does the budget matter? As we just touched on, it communicates the policy priorities of the city's elected officials. It also funds the core city services, and what is a core city service is certainly a discussion that happens every year, and a recent example would be the social worker program. The police department has been a core city service since the founding of the city, the social worker program is, I think, five years old, and some people would now consider it a core city service. So what is a core city service, we talk about every year, and the budget is the way to fund those services. The budget is also where citizens often see change first, and it is a plan for the next year, and of course, it's just a plan, we don't know exactly what's going to happen, which is why we have budget amendments to adjust to the budget throughout the year, and there are typically four, sometimes more, sometimes less each fiscal year.
Can I say just one additional thing about the, where citizens see change first, just because I think that it's a nexus of your role as council members? And to go back to the CRM conversation earlier, constituents call you with complaint that their trash, you know, their recycling is no longer being picked up. This is a hypothetical, this is not really happening, but that may have been because there was a budget shift made that year. And so what we do as staff is we try to make sure we identify any budget shift that will cause someone in their lives to notice something. So it could be as simple as striping of crosswalks, like, hey, that used to happen all the time and it doesn't really happen anymore, why is that? And it could be these tiny little budget changes that are made that have those impacts that people see in their day-to-day lives. And maybe you make that policy choice to say, you know, we really need to weigh the budget and we just can't afford to do the striping anymore, but making sure that you make that choice intentionally.
May I add something to that? On an example as simple as the crosswalk striping, it feels very administrative, but it really also has a budget and policy component to it. What happened in the case that Jennifer's describing is that a department just couldn't make ends meet with the resources that they had, and so they thought, well, we can switch and have crosswalks painted every other year or every third year instead of annually. And so they didn't share that with the council, because it didn't seem like a big deal to them, because you could still visibly see the crosswalks. But the PTA, the parents, community members, were really, really, really shocked when it got to be August and the city was not out painting the crosswalks as they'd done for 20 years faithfully. So then the council got involved. So, I had to say, what, where did the money go for that? And basically, it was eaten up by inflation, and that was just the lowest priority that they could see in order to manage within their budget. So now what we try to do is to say to the departments, what are you doing this year that you will not be doing next year? And so it's an irritating question in a lot of ways, but it does help us get to those things that are going to either surprise council members or surprise the public, or that are worthy of a policy conversation of the council during the budget season. So that's, that's an example where something small, a small dollar amount and a small issue, so to speak, ends up really having a community impact.
The last two points are that the budget is a tool for mapping out future needs as well as potential priorities. Perhaps one of the most obvious examples would be funding a study of something, to say, we're interested in this, we want to do it, but we don't know what it looks like, what it would cost. And so that's kind of an early signal of, maybe this is a future priority. And then, of course, the discussions are public and transparent. For those of you who have seen the budget book, it's almost 300 pages, that's a lot of transparency, and it's something we pride ourselves on.
All the information.
The next slide, there's kind of a semi-transparent, large silo with many smaller silos within it. And the semi-transparent silo is the total city budget, $1.9 billion. And of course, on the left, the airport fund is the largest portion of that, it's just over $1 billion. And for comparison's sake, just below that, the fiscal year 19 budget for the airport was less than half, but it was still $483 million. And of course, these are outliers, if you were to look back 10, 20 years, because the airport is building a new airport next to the current one, and so there are a lot of funds for that reconstruction effort. The other point is, these are not all of the silos, there are certainly many others, but it's important to think of the silos, because the funds cannot be transferred or shared between the silos unless a service is being provided. So if the IT department is providing a service to a different department, they can pay them back, but you can't just shift money between if there's a shortfall in one. There is an exception, and that's why the furthest right silo is Gulf. This current fiscal year, that non-transfer between silos was, made an exception for Gulf.
Could you tell us why that is? Not Gulf, the exception, but why, generally speaking, there's not transfer between silos?
Sometimes it's due to state law. Enterprise funds are supposed to operate as a business, so their revenues pay for their expenses. I don't think it's true in every instance. I think Jennifer knows more.
The, I think, no, Ben's exactly right, that sometimes it's state law, sometimes it's city policy, sometimes it's FAA policy. For example, the airport is probably the strictest in terms of their walls and silos. But public utilities is also fairly heavily regulated, because it's a fee-based, fee-and-tax-based business, essentially. And so with Gulf, while it is an enterprise fund, and enterprise funds are governed with state law, the administration last year was able to see enough leeway that the transfer from the general fund to make Gulf whole was not, you know, in violation of whatever statute governed that particular fund. So it's not true for all funds that has that flexibility, but it was true in the case of Gulf.
And occasionally, there are bond covenants?
Right.
That also preclude the transfer of funds?
Yep.
The only reason we were able to make the exception for Gulf, too, is because we were putting money in the silo, right?
I think that's...
We couldn't take money out of the silo.
That's also a key thing, I think, that there's also a public perception issue of taking money out of silos, right? That people are paying a fee, in theory, to receive a service, and if they're just paying a fee to prop up the general fund, they may feel strongly that that isn't okay, but the other way around may feel differently.
Yep.
You do a whole briefing on Gulf, and I'm sure we will at some point.
Yeah. So the next slide is a different way to look at the city's budget in a pie chart. Again, the airport is the largest amount, more than half. The next is the general fund and the public utility funds, and then the next two slices are other enterprise funds. This would be the RDA, housing, refuse, and again, Gulf. And then, internal service funds are fleet, IMS, the IT department, governmental immunity, and the internal service funds are typically not things the public sees, they're providing services to the departments, hence the name internal service funds.
Just a correction, I think, did you mention housing as an enterprise fund? Is it?
It's the Housing Trust Fund, it is, and it's...
Just say, okay.
Yeah.
Got it, thanks.
Yep. So there are two enterprise funds to call out in particular, because they have some special factors. It'd be the library and the redevelopment agency, the RDA. The library, the council does authorize the budget and approve the tax levy every year as part of the annual budget. The library is a separate legal, a separate taxing entity. The library board is responsible for the policy and budget oversight, and the director is accountable to the mayor and the council, but is hired and fired by the board. Again, the library, as an enterprise fund, doesn't transfer money with these other funds, these other silos, unless a service is provided. You'll hear that several times, because it is one of the fundamental principles of budgeting here. The redevelopment agency is also a separate legal entity. It's current...
Wait, all the library employees are city employees, right?
I think they're technically called library employees. The way I think about it is, is the library has their own line on a property tax bill, just like GEO bonds have their own line on the property tax bill, city has its own line on the property tax bill, and so it's like they're kind of separated that way.
But, do they have their own HR department?
Yes.
They, and in years past, they have been either more separate or less separate. Recently, they've been starting to use more of the city IT services, but that wasn't always the case. They had a separate health insurance plan than the city did, although they've started migrating closer to. And they didn't always track with what the city was recommending in terms of cost of living increases, because they've viewed that their salaries were so much lower already that, so, they, their library board was the ones, were the ones to make that decision. You guys gave them the overall box that they can operate within, but then they decide how to spend the money... You guys gave, you guys give them the overall box that they can operate within, but then they decide how to spend the money within that box, right?
So what about finance and the attorney's office? Are they-
They're, they're right now contracting with the city for attorney services, but they don't have to. The city can't require them to.
So they could get their own-
Finance, they do their own-
Attorney if they wanted.
They do their own finance.
Yeah. In the past, they've had two attorneys, one general attorney and one human resources attorney.
And, and there are times, and this is, I mean, there's a lot of good policy reasons why it's good for a library to be separated from the government because there's other bad things that happen when the government gets involved in like books and stuff. But there's, there are some challenges with their finance staff being in the same page as, as the city's finance staff. And I think that they've made a lot of improvements over the last like two or three years to really get aligned so that you'll see the library budget appears at the end of our budget, at the end of the city budget book, and it's kind of set up in a very similar way. And so it feels like it's part of the city, which is a good thing, but it hasn't always been that easy, so.
Gotcha.
The RDA is currently a department within the Department of Economic Development. And that was done so that the council would preserve its advice and consent over the director of the RDA position. The RDA does have a dedicated funding stream. Each of its project areas receives a tax increment. And each of the districts, each of the project areas is like an enterprise fund into itself. You can't transfer money between the different, the different districts. The money that's collected there needs to be spent there. The except, except housing, you are absolutely correct.
And a few other random exceptions, but we could do a whole nother briefing on RDA too. Yeah?
And the other important point is the affordable housing can be citywide for the RDA. It doesn't have to remain just within the district. The next slide has a graphic which is showing the baseline. The first year a project area is created. The green section throughout the life of the project area, that is the baseline amount that will continue to go to taxing entities, typically the city, the county, and the school district. As the project area grows and the money from the tax increment, which is the orange section, is reinvested, you hope that it continues to grow each year and it continues to go to the RDA. It's typically split between the taxing entities and the RDA. It's not 100% of that increment goes to the RDA. It's often a 75, 25 split where 25 will go to the taxing entities, 75 will go to the RDA. The, the philosophy around the RDA is typically viewed as an investment of these taxing entities are choosing to forego a portion of their tax increment that'll be reinvested into that project area. And at the end of the life, that project area will have a greater tax base than it would have except for the reinvestment that the RDA facilitated. The project areas are typically 20 to 25 years. And the next slide, we detail the existing project areas, the years they expire, the acres, and then the annual increment. And the increment numbers are for fiscal year 18. And I want to point out a few of these. The first two, the downtown, the central business district, and west Capitol Hill are both listed as extended. The RDA board, the council wearing different hats, extended the downtown, I believe it was in 2007. The west Capitol Hill was also extended, but it was extended for a single project. Once that project is complete, which is 300 West Improvements to the streetscape, then the project area is over. So a project area can be extended for a specific purpose or it can just be extended for another 25-year cycle.
How come we don't have the Northwest Quadrant CRA on here?
That one is missing, you are correct.
Yep, thank you.
The two most recent, the nine line and State Street are on the next page.
Yes. And if I could just make a note too about this downtown project area, because I think that when people read these numbers and especially like the total, you know, $52 million number, a lot of people think, oh, there's just 28 million, for example, sitting in the downtown. But most of that money is either pledged by contract or bonding, debt service kind of thing, and sort of spoken for. And so there's not actually $28 million each year to play with in the downtown central business district, although there is that much generated each year. But the RDA budget will go through line by line and you'll see it when we get to the annual budget and it'll say, you know, this agreement for this project, this agreement for this project. So it's pretty clear where it goes.
Mr. Chair, may I? To Jennifer's point that we, just so our new guys know, that we are doing, at our next RDA meeting, sort of a RDA 101. And kind of going over all of this, wherein Danny will kind of point out, as Jennifer said, as a preview before we get to the budget, that a lot of the money is actually already encumbered in some way. The majority of it, I would say 90% probably is already encumbered, particularly in our downtown area. So, but we'll go through that so that everyone can see what that looks like. And that will be next week, next RDA meeting, I think, I think.
The next two project areas, Sugar House and West Temple Gateway are both listed as expired, but they're technically still open. So they're not collecting the tax increment, but the council and the board haven't formally closed the area, so the RDA can still spend funds and still do projects in those areas. And sometimes this is done strategically. For the example, in Sugar House, there's the old DI site and it's been a goal to redevelop that site. And keeping the project area open allows the RDA to continue to use some more of its tools in that project area until that site's developed.
And I think the challenging is that they're not collecting money. So when the project area expired, the city received that money, just like that chart we talked about with the orange. And so it's the end of that orange. And so now the city and school district, county, whatever, get all their version of the, of the new growth. And so it still preserves the tool of the RDA being able to spend the money, but not receive the money, unless the city were to just allocate money to the RDA to help, to help with that, so.
The three last items on this slide are italicized. They're each worth calling out. The North Temple Viaduct CDA was created specifically to pay the debt service on the bond that built that viaduct on North Temple. And last time we checked, the annual increment was paying about 50% and then the city makes up the rest of that. And considering the intensity of development that's being built right now, it may reach 100% and more. And then what to do with the amount over that 100% is a policy question for the RDA board. Is that something to reimburse the city for past payments on the debt service? Is that something that should be reinvested into the area? That's a discussion for you to have at that point. The next one is program income fund. These are-
Sorry, I know this isn't, can we flag that for a future RDA chair, vice chair meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Can definitely do that. The program income fund is the most flexible money that the RDA has because it's not tax, it's not tax increment, which has a lot of statutory requirements and strings about how it can be used and where. Program income fund can be used in any project area for any redevelopment purpose. So it's usually very competitive because it's so flexible. The program income fund takes its money from leases of commercial space, mostly in the downtown area. And those have been longstanding properties the RDA owns. And then last is the revolving loan fund. And there's a balance of 9.7 million listed. And again, this was fiscal year 18. The current balance is a, under a million dollars. The RDA and the board have made a big effort in the last two years to get those dollars out working for the taxpayers. And so we just wanted to highlight that the balance is not as shown on the slide.
It fluctuates.
And it's hard to predict because you never know when someone's going to pay a loan off early or if interest rates change, they may want to pay it off early or they may not. So it, it does fluctuate a lot each year. And then the next slide are the two newest project areas, Nine Line and State Streets. The city and the school district have both confirmed participation. The county is to be determined at this time for both. The next section is on expenses. This is a pie chart of where the city's general fund is spending its dollars. And we often joke that the largest department is non-departmental. And there are a lot of things in non-departmental. This is where CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, budget lives. Some other examples are the Housing Trust Fund, CDBG, Community Development Block Grants, debt service, the Arts Council, and a whole slew of municipal contributions and organizations that the city supports and participates in.
Also internal service funds. So like if the council decides to allocate more money to fleet for police cars, that will often be routed through the non-departmental because, yeah, which inflates it.
The next two largest slices are police and then fire. And they have, you know, fairly straightforward missions compared to the fourth and fifth, which would be public services in community and neighborhoods, which have multiple divisions with many functions. There's a greater diversity of functions within those two departments. And then the rest are fairly small relative at 1% and 2%. When you look at the type of expense, it's pretty clear that city employees, the people, personal services is almost two-thirds of the budget. 61, 61% for fiscal year 2020. And this covers the salaries, the benefits, health insurance, pension, supplemental pay. Those are the single largest expense for the general fund. And because of this, each year in the annual budget, we have a separate briefing just on the compensation budget for the city.
Two or three things about this. That significant proportion being dedicated to employees is, first of all, it's a service organization providing service. So it's natural that it would be dedicated to staffing. But what it means is in a, in a difficult economy, and when there's an economic downturn, the city is faced with either cutting back services, doing layoffs. One time in the city's past, they asked the employees to take a pay cut. So there, there have been various approaches to that. And then you, you get into the situation with the unions where they are comparing to other communities and wanting, you know, to have equitable pay and that type of a thing. So the large concentration is a big issue, especially in the down economy.
It also, if I could add, it amplifies challenges for health insurance or retirement costs because those are tied to each individual employee. So if the retirement system says, we're upping your, you know, contribution by 3% instead of 1%, which is what we were planning on, it's not a little problem, it's a big problem, you know, a big budget problem. Or if one of the unions is saying, you know, we really need a 3% increase, not a 2% increase, that's not a little budget challenge, that's a big budget challenge because it's just, you know, lots of people, right? And so what each, each percent is a lot of money. And what we try to do in the budget analysis world is make sure that you understand like what each of those percentages means. But you'll, you'll hear this kind of steady theme of, you know, each change you make to an employee means a lot of money, so.
There's one other thing, if I could, on that personnel, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're okay.
And that is that some organizations are able to calculate what their costs would be, total retirement costs, total payouts, and they budget for that. They have a fund that they set aside. Salt Lake County is very good at that. In all of the contracts that they issue, they charge, like if we're, if we're doing a contract with Salt Lake County on animal control, they charge us for the retirement costs of their employees. We have never, as a city, calculated at that level except once every few years. It's a giant liability hanging over the city that hasn't really, I would say, been effectively documented or dealt with.
Councilor Dugan.
Has this ratio changed much over the last 20 years?
Interestingly, as we've updated this PowerPoint each year, the percentage has gone down. So about five years ago, the ratio was at like 66, 67%. I'm not sure if that's because of the, the council in the last maybe five, six years has made a real push towards investing in infrastructure and has bonded for significant amounts, has increased contributions to CIP. The funding our future sales tax has not been primarily dedicated towards people, although the police is one exception to that. So I don't know. But the trend, at least in the last five years, has been that that's a smaller number. But I'm not sure, you know, across 30 years, would it-
Yeah, before 2008, was it the opposite or, and then just the downturn changed it or was that?
I think it's fair to say that the city's always been a service-based organization, which means it's always been mostly people. So it's just a matter of sort of the trends of why, why things have gone down a little bit, so.
The next slide needs to be updated. Apologies, we don't have the latest numbers yet.
And the administration did give us updated numbers over the weekend, or on Friday, and I just haven't had a chance. So they're there. Thank you to Mary Beth, sorry.
There, there are a few points we wanted to make on this slide, though. One of them is that when the city transitioned away from a traditional health plan with larger premiums to the current high deductible health plan offering with a health savings account, the experience of the city has been the increase in health costs has been significantly less than what's been observed in the WASH front. And so the, the switch is successful. We're seeing fewer increases. And part of the success is viewed that the city frontloads the HSA. So half of the deductible on the high deductible health plan, the first paycheck in the new fiscal year is deposited into that health savings account for the employee. So there is a higher deductible, but here's half the money to reach that right up front at the very, very beginning of the fiscal year. And then on the retirement side, it was mentioned that the Utah retirement system determines what contributions the city needs to provide. So it's always a bit of an uncertainty in the budget season is how much is it going to be this year? And the last several years, it's been minimal. It's been just marginal increases. But right after the Great Recession, it was significant. URS invests those pool of funds in the stock market and they felt the pain, just like the rest of the country did. And that pain certainly reached the city's budget by having to increase the contributions to help make up some of the difference. So that takes us to revenues. You've seen what we have to, or what we are spending our money on, but where does the money come from? The first slide is the sources. And you'll see that sales tax is the largest at 34%. And sales tax is the least stable of these slices of the revenue pie. As an example, following the Great Recession, in one year, sales tax decreased over $12 million and it took quite a while for it to recover. Property tax is the most stable. It's a guaranteed floor that the city will receive year after year. And this is the first or maybe the, the second year when sales tax is greater than property tax. In the history of the city's budget, property tax has been the largest slice and that has now changed recently. The, the budget is often thought of as kind of a multi-legged stool. And so we've now switched from property tax to sales tax being the largest. And sales tax is more volatile and so the entire stool is a little less stable. And this points to the difficulty when a downturn hits of, we know sales tax is more volatile. It's probably going to decrease more, which is a bigger slice of the pie that'll have to be balanced in the budget.
And we're, Salt Lake City is unique among cities on the WASH front in the way our pie used to be distributed. I'd say our profile now is more common among cities that they keep their property taxes low, they rely heavily on sales tax. And, and so they feel the pain more in an economic downturn. The last economic downturn, Salt Lake City was able to weather it. I think, you know, it was painful, but you know, relatively speaking, they didn't, the city did not have to do massive layoffs. There were salary cuts, which was painful. And there were freezes in capital projects, but there wasn't a massive draw on the savings account, for example. And other cities did have to do that kind of extreme budgeting practices to, to weather that, so.
The other two slices, franchise taxes have been pretty flat for about a decade. It's been about 27, 28 million every year going back to about the Great Recession. And that means you're getting less purchasing power because of inflation. And this is largely a function of changes in technology. So less landlines, more cell phones, and that means less revenue coming to the city. And the telecommunications tax and federal and state law pretty much set the limit on what we can charge. And so that's not something that can be increased by the council. Yeah. The next slide is where does the council have legal authority to adjust? As I just mentioned, on the franchise tax, we, the council doesn't really have control. It's set in state law. It's set in state law. The licenses and permits typically require a cost justification study. And the council, in the past, has actually charged less than the maximum that some of those studies have found, for various reasons. Sometimes it's because you don't want to have a chilling effect on grammar requests and requests for information. And so you don't set it at $30 when that's what the cost justification may support. Right now, we actually have the lowest grammar fee in the WASHETCH front. Sales tax, the maximum is also set by state law. And in 2018, the council enacted supplemental sales and use tax of a half percent. And that is largely what changed sales tax to be the largest revenue source in the city's budget.
And I think it's, just to add to that, I wouldn't want there to be a perception that that was like an easy thing that can be done regularly. I mean, I don't, other people in the room probably have a longer history in this than I do, but I think that was like a generational, one-time thing that the legislature was willing to grant the city as a result of the prison relocation discussion. And so we had tried a handful of times, different ways at the legislature, to justify that because Salt Lake City is the capital city, because Salt Lake City has so many commuters, that Salt Lake City, just like resort communities, are allowed an extra tax, that Salt Lake City should be allowed an extra tax. And those efforts all failed. And so it is very rare to be able to increase your sales tax, at least in the state of Utah.
And I'll just add, there was, thinking back when it was increased, there was a perception that the increased sales tax will help capture revenue from the hundreds of thousands of commuters that come into the city to work or to study, et cetera. But when you run the numbers and look at how much extra the city would get from this half percent, no one eats that many lunches in their day-to-day. It's just not even close. The last slice, the green one where it varies, this one includes things such as fines. And the city typically does not increase fines on a regular basis. But the city does increase fees by the cost of inflation annually as part of the budget. And then, of course, with property taxes, the council has full control to set that rate.
Can I back up? One of the things with fines and fees, the city is probably about due for a big evaluation or study of our fees. There's, we've had two different consultants tell us that there's a great deal of room, headroom, that the city has. And you may, from a policy point of view, decide not to do that. But you could go in and do a significant study to just illustrate for yourselves what, how far you could go in just covering expenses. So that's something that you could choose to fund in a budget or before a budget. It would take a couple of years probably to implement it. But that's an area where we have a lot of room. We, this is another thing that Salt Lake County is much better at than we are, that they have a lot of work that they have done, and they are more aggressive at charging those fees.
Can I, may I ask a question? Mr. Chair.
Yep, Councilor Mott.
By fines and fees, are we talking anything from like a parking ticket up to a developer impact fee? Or are one of those not included in that?
So if I heard you right, the varies slices everything from an impact fee to a parking ticket to a business, or to a...
A business license?
Yeah.
Yeah. Those are all included in that fines and fees category that has not been reevaluated in several years, it sounds like?
Impact fees are a special case. They, this will be coming to the council soon, actually, is updating one of the impact fees. There are very specific statutes about how to calculate an impact fee. It could be its own presentation.
Those are state statutes?
Yes, correct. But the rest of the fees are all shown in one place, called a consolidated fee schedule. So if there's ever a question about how much does the city charge for X? And what is the city law, the ordinance that gives the authority for that? It's all in one place where you can see, here's who charges it, here's the ordinance, and here's the amount.
Okay, thanks.
So you were talking about other, Ben? Aren't licenses in the separate licenses and permits?
Yes. That's why business licenses would not be part of the green slice. So that takes us to the next slide of revenue trends, and I'll turn it over to Jennifer for this one.
So this is, it's a little bit repetitive, but just that historically, the city has really relied on the year-by-year growth of sales tax to keep pace with, because the city experiences inflation, just like the general community does. It costs more to buy asphalt, it costs more to pay for water, that waters the city parks, it costs more for the electricity that runs the buildings. And so there's sort of a base, year-to-base-year inflationary component to the city budget that always has to be dealt with, especially when you have so many employees. And so because the city's been reluctant to just say, increase property taxes every year, because that's sometimes a difficult conversation, the city has relied on sales tax. In recent years, new growth, property tax has really helped with that. And we'll get into the new growth formula and sort of how that has changed our budgeting. But that's why, as much as we're happy to have this extra sales tax, this Funding Our Future Sales Tax, it does cause budget analysts to feel a certain sense of caution, this yellow light feeling of, okay, it's really great right now, and we've had 11 years of business expansion, which is unique in the history of the US. And so how do you plan for that inevitable, even if it's not a recession, a slump, right? That each year, if we rely on sales tax to help with our costs. And just a list of some of those things that go up every year, pension, health insurance, energy. In recent years, this maintenance of new city facilities has really been an issue that because the city has invested in these great new amenities for the city that people want and need, it also puts a greater burden on public services, who has to kind of find ways, new creative ways, to either fit that in their budget or ask the council for more budget. And so that's just one of those things that comes with progress in the city is, you know, you put new things in, you got to figure out a way to maintain them. Yes, you must feed the unicorn, or the unicorn will die. Yes. And then, let's see. So I would say the Funding Our Future Sales Tax has been really unique in allowing the city to achieve these four policy areas, movement in these four policy areas of transit and housing and public safety and streets. But there really is nothing legally binding from the state perspective that says that in a downturn, the city must still fund housing, streets, transportation, and housing. So I think that the council still has that ability. Although the council did make a commitment to the public to be transparent about how those dollars are used, there's nothing legally binding in the same way, you know. So anyway, just to make sure we understand that, yeah.
One of the things that comes up is, in a sense, that with Funding Our Future was the first time that I know of that the city has sort of earmarked money for a specific purpose. And that was a very intentional choice by the council. And earmarking it for that purpose doesn't bind the council. And that was an important distinction, as Jennifer said. There have been requests to earmark funds for pretty much everything. You could easily choose to earmark funds for parks. You could choose to earmark funds for, the funds that are brought in by building permits and licensing-type things, those could be earmarked for the building division. The fire department at different times have said, well, we charge all these fees. Can't those go to defray the increases in our budget? So the council has steadfastly kept to a general fund concept where you are taking in tax money, sales tax money, property tax money, franchise fees, those sorts of things. And then you are allocating it as the elected officials on a basis of need. So there are a lot of pressures to do that, the earmarking. And typically, it's, after you weigh it, there are probably more downsides than upsides. And then there are the more formal ways to do an earmarking, which is kind of what would be formalized with, you'd have that option as part of that RDA legislation that you have been talking about. So that's separate from earmarking. That's a hard dedication of revenue.
Then the next slide is just intended to show, I think a lot of people in the general public assume that sales tax goes to the local community. And I think they don't get into the weeds of all the different entities that take a little slice of the sales tax. So these are all the different entities. Some are earmarked. So county ZAP, for example, is authorized by the voters. It's dedicated towards this county program, and it can only go for that. Others, like the state portion, goes to the general state fund. So if we go to the next slide, I think this is the slide that really is tough for a city budget analyst, because as reliant as we are on sales tax and as much feedback from the general public that we get about how high our sales tax feels, we don't actually get the majority of the sales tax. The majority goes to the state. And so for every dollar spent, or for every $10 spent, just over one cent comes to the city. And so it's just, it's another one of those interesting things of, and to Ben's point earlier, that you'd have to buy a whole bunch of lunches for someone who's a commuter here to pay for the cost of providing the police services to protect that commuter while they're in the city, or the road maintenance costs that that commuter is driving on the road, or the fire department costs when that commuter has a heart attack, or, you know. And so I think that that's something that the city's always struggled with, to kind of keep pace, keep pace with the cost of being the capital city, and especially given that, and I don't remember if we mentioned this, we probably should add it, that just over 40% of the property in the city is tax-exempt, meaning it's universities or churches. And so that most stable source of revenue is only charged to 60% of the properties in the city. And so we have just this constant budget structural challenge of needing to find ways to have those tax-exempt properties, which a lot of them are generating those commuters, like the church and the university, and keeping pace with the cost of providing services to those.
We do have that.
Cool, it's just later.
42% of the city is tax-exempt from property taxes.
Which is a bummer, but it's probably good for them. Any questions on that, sales tax distribution?
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
So I realize this would probably never happen, but assuming there was a big surplus, does the city have the authority to lower our percentage of sales tax?
It does, yeah.
Just not below the, only the 1.5% could be, or is that?
The state sets a maximum.
A maximum?
Yes. And I've never heard of any city even considering lowering it. And I think because of the things we just talked about, I think they would be more likely to lower property taxes than they would be to lower sales taxes.
But in terms of if someone were to say, oh, our sales tax is too high, what can you do about it? There's really not, I mean, the 1.5% is what's in our control. The rest is 100% out of our control.
Right, and so I think the challenge would be, if they wanted, if someone was asking the city to lower your sales tax, I think the city would have to then say, okay, what gets cut from the budget based on that sales tax being lowered? Or are you willing to pay more in property taxes to make up for that loss of sales tax?
I'm not proposing that, I was just understanding.
It's an interesting hypothetical exercise that terrifies me. Okay, so then, truth in taxation. This is a, property tax laws are different in every state. And so this is just a very special Utah law that I don't know exists in other states. There's, other states have all kinds of problems with their property tax law. But the basic concept is that the government is held harmless to their floor, whether the economy is rising or falling. And so the concept is that we shouldn't get a windfall when times are good. And just because someone's house value goes from $200,000 to $300,000, and we shouldn't be, we shouldn't lose money when times are bad, like if someone's house value goes from $300,000 down to $200,000. But there is always this concept that the city should be able to pay for truly new development. Like a property goes from being vacant to having an office building on it, right? The city should be able to recover some costs. But there's challenges, because the new growth formula is extremely complicated. But just the basic tenet is that if the value of your house goes up, so if your house doesn't do, you're not doing anything special with your house, but just the market causes your house to go from $200,000 to $300,000, the city does not get paid any more money by that. I think a lot of people assume that the city does, but we don't. And so the rate is adjusted down automatically to account for that increased value. So that the city, let's say the city gets $10 one year from your house, the city will continue to get $10, even if your house is worth 20% more. So the only way the city gets more money is if there's truly new development. And this is all theoretical, right? So there's always little hiccups, because it's a big dark hole of numbers and calculations. That's lots of fun. But maybe we can go to the old, so the way the old new growth formula was fashioned didn't really help the city explain someone who might have seen a property tax increase on their bill, because there was all kinds of other stuff meshed into the formula. There was centrally assessed property, like Verizon and the railroad and Delta Airlines. They call that centrally assessed property, because it crosses county lines, right? It's property that's so big that it's assessed centrally by the state, and then they divvy it out to the cities. And then personal property depreciation. If a law firm buys a conference room table, this is the example that we always use, and they choose to depreciate it all in one year, that could offset, this used to offset the new office building that was built in the city. And so this was a problem. So a couple of years ago, thankfully, the state changed the new growth formula. And now all of those variables are separated out from whether or not the city gets this new development credit, right? So that yellow arrow of new development is actual new revenue that the city now receives based on new development in the city. And it was one of those things of, every year, the finance department and we are kind of bracing ourselves, because if it feels too good to be true, it usually is, you know. And so, but it's been four years now, maybe four or five budget cycles now. And Mary Beth and the finance department is now able to predict, based on building permits and certificates of occupancy, what our new growth should be. And it's off by a little bit sometimes, but at least it's close. Whereas before, it was like the Wizard of Oz, and on June 6th, we would find out what the Wizard of Oz decided to give to us. And it was not a very helpful way for the administration to put together a budget, because then they couldn't plan for new services that were caused by that new growth. And then not a very helpful way for the council to budget, because then it would always be the surprise money. And so you would have spent a month deliberating the budget and arguing over $20,000. And then on June 6th or June 8th, you realize that there's an extra $1 million to play with. And all of a sudden, everyone's problems are solved. And so it feels much more sane, the way it's done now, which is that there's some level of predictability of, and then it also helps the city keep pace with that cost of, at least some sort of keep pace with the cost of that new development. So, does that make sense?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilor Mott.
Okay, so if property values increase and property taxes go up, that all stays with the county or the state? Or why, because people's house property taxes do go up?
Right, and it's usually, it's usually because some combination of factors, like the school district has decided to increase property taxes, the county has decided. If a bond that they voted on four years ago happens to be issued in that year, they don't see that property tax increase until the bonds are issued. So our staff fields questions often with Salt Lake City taxpayers, who want us to go through their tax bill, and we will, to say, well, the library voted on an increase, and the school district voted on an increase, and they were each this much. But they added up to, you know, this much.
But it is based somewhat on the assessed value, right?
It is based on the assessed value, but unless your, unless your property is changing in nature, so the example, at one point, like if you are adding duplex to your backyard, you know, that is new development. And that, by the county, and it's the county assessor that determines whether what's going on on your property is new growth or is just, I forget what the technical, I'm looking for Mary Beth, she's not here. There's a technical term that the tax commission uses to explain appreciation in value, which is just, nothing's going on on your property, but because you live in Salt Lake City and values are increasing in Salt Lake City, your property is now worth 10% more than it was last year.
But that person would not be paying more taxes?
No, unless one of the entities voted.
Okay.
Yeah. And the rate changes.
The rate changed.
But the rate should hold your bill exactly the same unless one of those entities voted to increase your taxes or if, geo-bonds are really, they're a gift and a curse because people vote on them and then they're almost never issued until two or three years later. And so it doesn't show up on your bill, you know, you mentally vote and you think, oh yeah, I can, you know, 10 bucks a year or whatever, I can do that, but it doesn't actually come, come due until the city or the county or the school district issues them. So that's another, yeah.
So borrowing a geo-bond or some other rate increase, the actual rate will fluctuate year in and year based on the total, the total amount of money coming in stays pretty stable.
Yeah.
But each of our rates change to keep that stable.
Right.
So if it's down, we, our rates go up to pay more to keep that stable. If it's high, our rates drop, so we each pay a little less.
Right.
Same amount of money comes into all the entities.
Right, so like, and it's, it's based on your budget. So, you know, if the library sets a budget of $20 million, that budget of $20 million is guaranteed that next year whether or not properties appreciate or depreciate.
Councilmember Dugan.
So if the, if the library increases their rate, then we will see a property tax increase, but it's all going to the library?
Yes.
Okay. And new development, that comes, that will get our percentage of whatever that piece of pie is?
Right.
Okay.
Councilmember Voldemortos? Oh, you didn't have one. Cindy?
Jennifer, can you help us with a situation in a down economy? In order to generate the dollar amount to keep the budget the same, which is what's guaranteed by the city's tax system, or the state's tax system, is it possible for a, for the taxpayers to see an increase in the budget in a down economy?
I think
Or not increase in the budget, increase in what they pay?
I think it would be an increase in the rate, just, sorry, playing out the theory here. If their property was worth less, in theory, right, a down economy, all the properties are worth less, the rate would float up to ensure that the city received the same amount of money. Let me see. I think that that would mean that the bill that they're paying would be the same as the bill they were paying when they
Just the rate that changes.
It's just the rate that changes. Now, I think the challenge is that in a down economy, I don't know that the budget stays the same. The budget, yeah, so I think that it's the rate that floats up and down. I think the feedback we received in the, in the recession was that if the general, if the news about the city cutting its budget, why aren't they seeing a property tax decrease, right? Why aren't their property tax bills going down? And I think that the city relied on that floor, but it feels to the taxpayer, it feels like, well, if there's a recession and I'm getting, my paycheck's getting cut by 20% or the city's cutting their budget by 20%, why isn't my bill going down? And so there was some feedback that we should have, instead of letting that rate adjust up, we should have adjusted that rate down to make our property tax revenue lower, based on the fact that everyone was feeling the pain, right?
Well, and you're, you're, hold on, my clarifying question. You're all saying rate, but what you mean is amount, right? Because we didn't change the rates.
It's that we don't change amounts. So the rates change all the time.
I thought we just talked about this and it was the other way around, that we set the rates, we didn't vote to change the rates, but the amounts fluctuated because of
It's the other way, it's the other way. You set the amount and then the rate just does what it, the rate does what it does to achieve the amount. So if you say, here's our certified rate amount, let's say our budget last year was $100 million and we want to continue that exact same $100 million, the rate floats up and down, but you don't have to go through a truth and taxation hearing because you're just getting that same exact amount. If you wanted $101 million, the rate has to adjust up in order to generate that $101 million, but you don't, you don't need to, you don't calculate that necessarily, you don't say what the rate is, you say what the budget you want is and then the rate is sort of spit out as a calculation based on the assessed value.
The council does vote on a rate.
True, that's true, yeah.
But then, okay, so when we change, if we were to raise property tax, we would raise the rate though?
Right. And, and we would figure out how much to raise the rate by asking you, how much do you need money-wise?
Gotcha, okay.
Because each year, the total assessed value of the city
Uh huh.
Is hundreds of millions of dollars different. And it's all aggregated.
Okay, so, so last year when we did the equalization?
Mm-hmm, stabilization.
Stabilization. What caused that?
Okay, that was a, another concept where, so you set your rate and you set your budget assuming a variety of factors, like 95% of the people in the city are going to pay their taxes and
Oh, that's right.
Not, not very many businesses are going to buy new things and pay taxes on it in that year.
Uh huh.
And if all the stars align and more people are on time with their payment and more businesses are investing, then it's possible that the city receives more actual revenue than was budgeted.
But, but why did that happen, do you think?
Based on the information from finance, it was a combination of greater than expected participa, you know, on-time payment of property taxes and business investment, business investment within that calendar year, meaning they paid, they made the investment and they paid the taxes on, in that calendar year.
But is there some policy thing that, that we did or that the state did that caused that or did it just, it just happened?
It just happened and in order to make it so that that revenue was not one-time revenue, we raised the floor so that that revenue is ongoing. And I, thank you for, in advance for making the point.
The baseline property tax budget then shifts upwards.
Yep.
So it's not stable anymore, it goes up.
Right.
So the new threshold is higher than was the previous year going forward every year. So if growth changes again, we're at a higher level, so it does, I won't say the word, but there may be a change in what you pay eventually if the economy goes down.
Right.
Okay, Councilmember Dugan.
So when you sell a house, does that property tax stay the same? So I, I bought the house for 100 grand or, and then I sell it for, to you for 200 grand, is your property tax, is that new development? Do you get
No.
So
No, buying and selling is not new.
So does the city get more money from property taxes when, when we sell houses?
No, not necessarily. And there's this really interesting thing that happens with assessed value and sales value, where especially in Salt Lake City, they are not the same. And so you might sell a house for $500,000, but if you look up the county assessed value of that property, it's like $300,000. So the city only gets based on the assessed value, not the sales value. Does that make sense? And it, and it's, it stays with the property, it doesn't matter who lives in it, if three people live in it in a current year, it's the, you know, one bill for the year kind of thing. And so I think that's up to the escrow. I don't, I don't know the ins and outs of real estate transactions, but I think there's like an escrow thing where one property owner transfers the remaining property tax, I don't know. You could probably teach me about that.
Yeah, yes. I was just saying, I need the, we need the monopoly money out.
Yeah, yeah.
Cindy, go ahead.
I might have just lost my train of thought. Oh, okay, never mind, sorry, I haven't.
Okay.
So Jennifer, when we're saying that the property tax stays the same for a property owner, absent some action on the part of a taxing entity to increase
Right.
The other thing that can happen that is frustrating for property owners is that you can have some centrally, and stop me here if I'm saying it incorrectly, two things I can think of. One is that you can have a centrally assessed parcel of property like Delta Airlines where they came, come in and appeal it and it reduces their tax bill and that means everyone else's tax bill has to go up slightly in order to keep all of the entities at a harmless dollar amount. So, so they
That actually did happen.
Yeah, that has happened. So, so that's one way that your taxpayers could see a bit of an increase. Another is when the assessor is focused on one area of the city over another area of the city. And it's much more efficient these days, but there used to be cases where one part of the city was getting updated with the assessments or with the assessed value and the rest of the city wasn't yet. And so that created some difference in the dollar amounts that they were paying. So even though it is absolutely correct to say that people should pay the same dollar amount absent a tax change by one of those entities, there are some other funky things that can happen. So when a homeowner hands you their property tax bill and says, this, this shouldn't have changed, there's a lot of stuff that we can do to go in and say exactly why.
Yeah.
And we're happy to help with that. And they also can get that help from the county and they can also appeal their taxes to the county.
Yep.
Okay.
How's that for some fun?
Perfect, makes perfect sense.
It makes perfect sense, right? Super clear.
Yeah.
This is, this is data from, I believe, 2010, but it's still, it's still probably fairly accurate and we can go in and update it. But this is just to show, just like everyone assumes that all sales tax goes to the city, everyone assumes all property tax goes to the city. And we are in a case where we're not even the majority, we're not even close to the majority. The school district is the majority, we're sort of the next largest collector, then the county, then the library, then other. So that also helps us when constituents come and ask about their $300 property tax increase, we help them break down, okay, of that $300, 20 was because of the city, most of that was the geo-bond you approved a couple of years ago, $30 is the school district, here's their phone number, you know? Or, you know, here's how, or here's how you can appeal your tax to the county, things like that. So this is just explaining how commercial versus residential properties are assessed. And in recent years, some outside housing experts have drawn a really interesting conclusion about how this, this is state tax policy, this is not city tax policy, could accidentally be dampening investment in apartments. And so what happens in Utah is commercial properties taxed at 100% of assessed value. Primary residences are taxed at 55% of assessed value. And so in a way, you get a tax benefit for developing primary residences. So single-family home developments, condo developments also are counted in that sort of primary residential things. But apartment buildings are taxed like commercial property. And so the person who's developing multifamily units has to make that calculation that it's worth paying that ongoing property tax in order to build that housing. And so, I don't know, it's, it's interesting that it's like that. Now, there's probably lots of good reasons about keeping people in their homes, you know, helping them age in place, especially if they're on a fixed income, but it's just one of those things that outside housing experts, people who are not used to Utah's property tax laws, they point out as an interesting state policy that, you know, the state even may want to revisit at some point.
Isn't, wasn't this one of the selling points for municipalities across the state about density, that their revenue would change by changing some density pieces?
Right, right, that if, right, right, that cities could receive more money if they were willing to zone for
Zone differently.
Yeah, but I think that there's the supply, there's the regulatory side of that and then there's the business economics side of that, which is that you still, it's still more expensive to develop apartment buildings than it is single-family, you know, just in a real simplistic way. The other reason that we have this slide, the original reason we have this slide, is that you'll frequently see if we do consider a property tax increase, you'll see staff kind of highlight, here's the increase for an average homeowner and here's the increase for an average business property. And that's because any decision you guys make about property taxes affect commercial properties to a greater extent than they affect residential properties. So that's the reason we do that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilmember Fowler.
I think, I appreciate you pointing this out, Jen and Ben, because it makes me think about housing affordability, right? I mean, we keep talking about further density and the infills and, and kind of making more apartment buildings, but then that cost is certainly passed off to the people who live in an apartment building. And so there's also a question of affordability and if, from what I'm thinking is like, do we have this discussion in like our legislative subcommittee meeting to say, is this something that in the future we would want our, our, to take the administration and talk to our lobbyists about, right? And, and they're sort of that double-edged sword because yes, we still want the 100% that, you know, that's our budget and we would like to keep that.
Up the money.
But then there's this other policy question of affordability and, and actually housing people and getting them into those houses.
And I should point out, apartment buildings that are, and this is like an asterisk, I guess, apartment buildings that are managed by nonprofits, but continually managed by nonprofits, have the same status as if it was a nonprofit. And so they don't pay property taxes. Now, there's pros and cons to that, right? That that's yet more, you know, house, or that yet more property in the city that are not paying any property taxes, but I think that helps a little bit of the affordability concern, but only if you're one of those residents who's lucky enough to get into an apartment building
Right.
Managed by a nonprofit. And there's a lot of affordable apartments that are not officially, you know, managed by a nonprofit for the purpose of affordable housing, but
Right.
Yeah, and those would pay full property taxes.
That's interesting, thanks.
There's probably all kinds of unintended consequences, by the way, that I think it would help to understand the landscape of, you know, kind of internally too, so. Just, this is a general policy concept of one-time versus ongoing money. So many of the funding tools are, some funding tools are ongoing and some funding tools are one-time. And it really helps to align the funding tools with the kind of need you have, that we have a general practice in the city, which is a really good one, that you pay for ongoing needs with ongoing revenue and you pay for one-time needs with one-time revenue. We're not always perfect, but I think over the last few years, there's been fewer and fewer years where we've balanced the budget essentially with one-time money, excuse me. So there's just a couple of examples of the kinds of needs that are ongoing, like maintenance of parks, that's something that you'll always have to do, or staffing or pension and health insurance, you can't suddenly stop doing that. But things like a study or an audit, that's a one-time expense. So just kind of something to consider. These are some questions we ask when council members frequently are, you know, ask us, well, I have this idea in mind, how do I fund it? And so these are some of the questions we walk through when considering what are some appropriate tools to consider when you want to think about how to fund something. So how long or how often is the money needed? Is it one-time or ongoing? Who benefits from the thing? Because sometimes depending on who benefits from the thing, that opens up other funding tools. What is the political landscape or public support surrounding the project? So that kind of cues you into, is a bond, something that's realistic. What is the governance structure created by a given tool? This has come up a lot recently with public-private partnerships and experiences that other cities have had with the governance structure being a critical piece of the conversation before jumping into that kind of funding tool, because it is a funding tool. Or does another level of government already or historically provide the service? Because sometimes it's easier to help advocate for adding resources to that level of government than creating a new level of service at this level of government, right? So transit is actually a good example recently where the city had this need to expand the transit service and rather than create a new transit authority managed and operated by the city, the city contracted with UTA, got UTA some additional resources to expand the service level provided by UTA.
I think another way to ask that last question is, would you be duplicating an administrative function to provide the same service? So basically, if you already have an accountant or a secretary who's working in the office to provide that service, that administrative support, you have to hire those people again in a different entity just to provide a little more of that same service, which is less efficient.
And then the next slide is kind of repetitive, maybe we'll go to the next one. So these are, let's see, these are some other policy considerations. Are there legal restrictions or guidelines for the tool that you're looking at? And who are you paying it to? So sometimes the funding tool will have legal restrictions depending on where the money is ultimately going. If it's funding a city, a truly city project, that opens up tax-exempt conversations about tax-exempt status. If it's funding a public-private partnership where a private entity will be benefiting from the public investment, that requires taxable bonds, right? So there's different legal rules that are triggered depending on what the answers to some of these questions are. Rather than review the table, I'm just going to go to the overview of primary financial tools. So these are the basics, we can get way farther into the weeds on all of this stuff. But these are some of the sort of high-level tools. And then just from a budget analyst perspective, I like to always think about like who, who's paying? So just because a tool has a different name, I want to understand who's paying for that tool so that we can understand, is it, is it truly a new tool or is it a tool that's sort of framed in a different way? Or is it a tool that's sort of framed in a different way, but ultimately still has the same person paying?
And Jennifer, I'd add to that. Is it, is it money that we were going to get anyway?
Oh, right.
So that happens a lot, where someone will come up with a new way, just like on a special assessment area, or something like that. It may be that that money was going to go to the city anyway, and somebody will think up, well, let's repurpose it, let's use that tool and repurpose it. And, and sometimes that gives us no net increase in revenue. So that's, that's disappointing, but a real part of what we have to go through to get you what you need.
So, just reviewing, just really quickly, I don't know if you want me to go through all this, or it's getting late, and I'm probably been talking too much, so feel free to, you know, tell me to wrap it up. But in general, it's either property taxpayers or people who are buying goods and services in Salt Lake City who pay for everything. And, and people who use services in Salt Lake City, like parking, are kind of that next layer of revenue that's available. One, this, this sort of like holy grail of budget that we haven't quite cracked yet is a way to get those tax-exempt properties to sort of fairly and equitably pay. There are interesting tools that are out there, like the transportation utility fee. But unfortunately, that's subject to a lawsuit right now. And other cities have tried it. I think Salt Lake City was interested in it, but didn't want to be the sort of first one in and the most obvious target. A few Utah County cities jumped in pretty heavily on the transportation utility fee idea, and quickly got sued. And so that's working its way through the courts right now. But it is an interesting option to say, given our current taxing structure, how do we account for the fact that like 40% of the city just does not contribute at all to the basic provision of services in the city? So that's, that's something that, as budget analysts, we're always kind of watching. And, and keeping our eyes out for new tools, right? So keep your eyes out for new tools. Tell us about them.
Side note, on the 40/60 split, kind of taxable, non-taxable entities, has that changed at all with the Northwest Quadrant and the Inland Port? Have we seen anything different in that? I know that it's fluctuating every year, but...
I don't, those, those properties are still technically taxable. But I think, and I think that we're all holding our collective breath that it's not going to stay at the point where we get 0%. And so, just like we have RDA project areas where the city gets 25%, we still consider, consider that taxable property, right, like Stadler. And so I think that if the statute stayed as is, where the Inland Port gets 100% and just reimburses us a little bit, we probably would change that calculation. But I think everyone's hoping that it's not, so.
Yeah, so that's just based on a percentage of actual parcels. This is not necessarily on the actual value of those parcels, because one-third of the city that didn't generate much revenue at all wasn't, well, it's a little different, alright.
Right. The other one that is interesting to point out, that I think that Salt Lake City used to use a lot, and then when the recession happened, backed way off of. But I actually think is one of those interesting tools, because of how directly tied it is to the people who benefit and the people who pay, are SAAs or business improvement districts. And that's tied directly to, if we make an investment, if it increases the value of your property, and you benefit from that, is there some sort of partnership where even if it's not 100% of the cost of making that improvement, having the sort of adjacent taxpayers help with that kind of assessment? The city used to do it for things as little as like sidewalk, sidewalks in neighborhoods. And so the city would establish an SAA to redo all the sidewalks in a given area. And each property owner who would benefit from that paid a little bit, and the city would match a little bit. I forget if it was 50/50 or 75/25. But once the recession hit, I think people were real, just really reluctant to like add more onto their property taxes, which is understandable. So, but that's something that a lot of other cities use as a tool regularly, that I think that Salt Lake City doesn't use as often.
And, and we failed at it a few times when we should have succeeded. And it was really because we hadn't allocated the resources necessary to go out and talk to the people in the public and, and demonstrate to them, here are the pros, here are the cons, so that they could make an informed decision. It felt like they were making decisions without enough information. This would be an especially good tool for the alley conversation that you guys were talking about the other night. It's also been used for street lighting. It was talked about as a possible tool on North Temple when the city included enhanced landscaping and irrigation, things like that. So it's pretty flexible, and there's probably a fairly large potential there.
Councilmember Mano.
So the Streets Department does have a 50/50 concrete program, where if you elect just in front of your house to replace your curb and gutter, you pay half of that? Is that different than a, I mean, that's not a tax, so it's a fee?
Yeah, it's a very like small-scale version of an SAA, because it's, it's the property owner saying, I'll pay half if the city pays half. Now, that said, the 50/50 program was not funded at a level that was sufficient to cover all of the 50s.
Oh, really?
And so, I don't know if it's been officially suspended, but it's not... I'm trying to find the right way to say this, but it, it required, because it requires city budget, that means that the council has to prioritize spending the money that way. And there were so many other streets that needed attention that...
There, there was a change in the capital improvement program a couple of years ago to a proactive sidewalk repair and replacement program, to kind of say, instead of waiting for someone to complain, when we can, within the budget approved by the council, we will go out to areas we are aware of to proactively repair and replace that sidewalk. That being said, it is not at the level to meet the need of complaints.
And in the CIP, or CDBG plan, the federal funding plan that was presented to you a while ago, I think that they were talking about eliminating the funding for sidewalk.
That's a good point. There are examples of when someone can apply for CDBG funding to cover their 50%. I'm not aware of how often that's happened. We can ask it. And it would be a policy shift under the new plan. I think you're right, that it would, it would not have that as a priority.
Well, it isn't that individuals were applying, it was, it was target areas. And I think that they were telling us that that isn't a recommendation they're making this year. But let's follow up and just, we'll clarify.
Okay, jumping to, because I think we've covered tools. And we can do more tool conversations if we want. But jumping to the council priorities, so staff will always do our best to, as we go through either the department budgets or the budget amendments, to highlight things that we know that either council members are interested in individually or as a group. And so please communicate anything you're in, you're interested in, that you think has a budget nexus to staff. And we keep a running list of those thoughts, and so we always look for those opportunities. Some priorities are very primarily linked to the budget, like, I want, you know, 50 miles of new streets. Other priorities are kind of more tangentially related to the budget, but it's still really important to keep a focus on, in the budget, like homelessness or sustainability. So don't shy away from sharing ideas with us just because you think, oh, well, this doesn't really relate to the budget. Because, trust me, I can find a link, no matter where your ideas are. And so staff will try and highlight those opportunities as we see them. And then just quickly to go over the calendar, since it feels like the budget is far away, but it's like really not, and the administration knows that better than anyone, because they're probably in the thick of it right now. So they deliberate the budget, usually through February and March. The mayor finalizes the budget in April. State law requires the mayor to formally present the budget to you the first Tuesday in May. You have until the end of June now to adopt the budget. And so we do everything, analyze the budget, have public hearings about the budget, have meetings with departments, with the administration, to understand their proposals, all throughout, eat, live, sleep budget, yeah. So that's our fun for May. And then in, as a part of that budget, if you guys decide to either do a judgment levy, which is a whole other property tax rabbit hole that I can talk about, or raise property taxes, there's a requirement for a truth and taxation hearing, and that happens in August. And so it feels awkward, because your budget year actually starts July 1, but you don't formally ratify it until like mid-August, when you have your truth and taxation hearing. So that's, and then throughout the year, the administration will submit budget amendments, things that weren't able to be foreseen during the annual budget process. There's usually four or five a year. And then we just handle those as we get them. Yeah, it's like, it's like a merry-go-round, a wonderful budget merry-go-round.
I didn't realize that, that the budget doesn't become formal until August. So what are we running off of for July and August?
It's, it's interesting, and it's actually been the subject of some league discussions of pointing out, because Provo recently, they had a referendum to overturn Provo's decision on their truth and taxation hearing, which meant that Provo's budget was basically a lie for like the first three months, you know, or, or based on, based on falsehood, whatever. You know, not, not official. And so the city does what we call sales, sales tax anticipation notes. So we'll issue a bond based on anticipating revenue coming in. But we actually, I don't know, our, the way our budget is built, the finance department kind of watches that on a month-to-month basis, and tells us if it's needed, or if it's not, or if we don't need as much in a year. But our city, I don't know, I feel like our city elected officials feel strongly enough about the budget by that time that everyone's pretty darn sure that what was adopted in June is the thing that's going to be ratified in August, so. And if there's ever a time where you're unsure about it, I think there's things that the staff can do to make it so that the, whatever delta there is of, like, let's say that you're proposing a $2 million property tax increase, but you're a little uncomfortable about it. Staff could recommend to say, well, let's balance that $2 million in the CIP fund so that you're not hiring someone on July 1 and laying them off on August 15, when the budget's reworked. Or you might say, let's hold off on hiring anyone until September, when we know for sure that we can hire someone. So there's, there's creative ways to get around that. But we actually haven't had the challenge that Provo did. Provo went way out on a limb, I think, without the support of their residents in paying off some of the debt from their fiber optic thing, so, anyway.
Is a truth and taxation hearing within the city, or does that happen at a state level or at a court or something?
Each taxing entity has their own. And there's this funky thing where no taxing entity that overlaps can have their truth and taxation hearing on the same night. So there's this fun dance that we do with the county, where we have to pick a date, like in January, not knowing if you're even going to do a truth and taxation hearing. But if we don't pick that date, then if the school district picks that date, then we have to scramble and figure out a time for you guys to meet before... I think state law requires you guys to have it by like August 20th or 22nd, something like that.
We just do that within one of these meetings?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's internal, and, and you have it in a formal meeting. Do you have a formal public hearing? It's just like any of your other public hearings. People come, talk to you.
Okay. Questions? Great. All right, then we will adjourn for dinner, and we convene across the hall at 7.
That was a lot of talking, I'm sorry.
So what is the answer to what?